Looks like we're going.
Okay. Are we ready? Okay. Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order, and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, we don't have any public comments today.
Madam Chair, so just acknowledging, this is our regular work session for a Monday afternoon. Usually we have a board meeting on Wednesdays where it's a little bit more formal. So, the agenda items for today are a little bit more fluid, and acknowledging that we just heard from our staff that our COVID-19 update was scheduled for the kickoff of this meeting, but that'll be more like the bottom of the hour thirty minutes from now when our Health Director can join us. Just kinda laying out the scene.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I wasn't paying attention. Okay, so we do have the Central Oregon Arts Center for the Arts presentation, if you would like to...
Moment, Tito.
Yes.
Okay.
We have gridlock here.
Okay.
We have these to you, or...
Yes.
Yes, that'd be lovely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can you start talking without this?
Thanks, bye.
You know what, I can.
Okay, good.
Oh, thank you very much.
Just give her a microphone.
Ah, yeah, get her close to a mic.
I'm just gonna let you have these. Hi, my name is Katrina Hayes, and I am on the Board for the Central Oregon Center for the Arts. I'd like to introduce a couple of other Board members. This is our Board President, Laura Thompson. Mr. Michael Gesme, as you know, is our conductor of our Central Oregon Center for the Arts. And my background is, I have made my living as a singer, an opera singer, an actress, and a writer, and lived in Central Oregon for twenty years. And I apologize, so this is just gonna be a verbal... I've got a beautiful PowerPoint presentation that will show up at some point.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
You've gotten the brochure, which gives you a little bit of pictures. But first of all, I wanted to give you some history on the efforts to create a cultural center in Central Oregon. It's been going on for forty-four years, maybe even a little longer. In nineteen seventy-four, a Citizens Advisory Committee turned in a report to COCC about the status of the art in Central Oregon and the feasibility of a cultural arts center. And this would have made COCC the proud owner of a cultural arts center. That didn't work for the college at the time. So, in the nineteen eighties, various groups, including Bill Smith and Mike Hollern, looked at different locations, everywhere from Pilot Butte, Shovlin Hickson Building, the Old Mill before it was the Old Mill, Deschutes Public, and then a location across from the current Deschutes Public Library, the Old Bend High School. None of these ideas really got a lot of momentum. In nineteen ninety-two, a group began to work on putting a cultural center where the Pavilion is right now. Another group in nineteen ninety-six was looking at putting something in Juniper Ridge. And two thousand and two, we got a group that got a little farther down the road, actually created and paid for a feasibility study that was done by AMS Planning and Research that looked at the possibility of creating a Central Oregon Center for the Arts. And that's where the name first showed up. Support for that effort, and I'm sure a lot of you were around at that time, ultimately swung over in favor of pursuing... Boy, those are not my files. Swung over in favor of pursuing the Tower Theater and the restoration of the Tower Theater. And as you know, that opened in two thousand and four, and is a beloved jewel of our performing arts community now. So, that's a little bit of history. Now, we're getting somewhere with pretty, but not quite yet. So, why renew this effort now? Well, a few bullet points on that one, and let's see if we can just move through to... Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
So, it's probably good, just an observation, two thousand and four, a couple of years before, a financial deal to get that Tower Theater done, in working, and it has been a jewel for Central Oregon. So, I mean, that is something to celebrate.
It is, absolutely.
Because you see some situations where, you know, there was big commitments being made in two thousand and five, six, and seven, and if this was pulled the trigger on a big events or art center, it could have been a rough road for a while.
I actually think, I am in absolute agreement with you. I think by not, by having a larger cultural arts center with a financial downturn...
Yeah.
I mean, things work out, don't they? And so, why are we doing it now? Well, why are we resurging it now? Is, we're looking at a forty-four percent increase in Central Oregon since two thousand and two, which I know you guys know these numbers. We're looking at more, and that was the two thousand and eighteen census numbers. Secondly, we're out of performance space. So, I don't know if you caught this, in the source, in December two thousand and nineteen, local and regional artists of all kinds are experiencing significant challenges in trying to find performance space, rehearsal space, work and display spaces, storage for instruments, costumes, and props. So, that's a little ground rising that is happening just at the time when we were becoming a 501(c)(3). Tower Theater, we love our Tower Theater. It has four hundred and eighty seats. It was built in nineteen forty as a movie theater, and I think Michael can attest to the fact that it is not acoustically beautiful for a symphony. And if you've ever done a play or been backstage in the Tower Theater, you understand its limits and constraints as a performance venue. Tri-County high schools have some of our best performance options, but we're limited by their schedules, because of course, the school schedule has to prevail, limited by the number of seats, and limited by the amount, the kind of acoustic quality that we've gotten. So, what is an impact that we get? We get the impact of a cultural constraint, because in our region, in the tri-county region, because of the population, because of the limited performance space, we are constrained on what we can experience culturally. This deficit of ideal space, it limits our local artists, it limits our physical artists, and by physical artists, I mean, you know, the visual, that they make things as opposed to perform things. And we can't get touring companies here. We can get little ones, but we rarely do. We can't get the Broadway shows because we don't have a good venue for that. And we can't get museum shows, because the High Desert Museum is one of our only options for touring shows, and they bring in good touring museum shows, but the lighting is problematic and not high quality. Final impact is economic constraint. So, if all of the above results in less revenue being produced in the region by artists, and less money being brought into the region by cultural tourism. So, let's look a little bit at the economic impact of arts and culture. There's a report that was put out in two thousand and fifteen, a new one is coming out this year, two thousand and twenty, by American in the Arts. It says in two thousand and fifteen, arts and culture nonprofit groups in Central Oregon added thirty-four point five million dollars to our economy. That's a pretty good number. So, if you look at the benefits of economic benefits to the region, it's pretty broad and pretty deep. So, art as a business is... Hang on, losing my notes, coming back. If you think, we talked to Scott Acock at the Intergovernmental Agency, and he made an interesting observation, that this region defines arts and culture as an economic driver. And he also observed, and he doesn't have a formal study on this, but he said that his staff has pointed out and talked about the fact that artists move to Central Oregon because it's awesome, and then they go to Portland or Seattle within six months to two years, because there's not enough space, as quoted in that source article. So, there's a little bit of an art drain happening, according to the Intergovernmental Council. So, a regional and cultural arts center can work to support and develop art as a small business, and the return can be enormous. And there's something that I want to point out. The same American in the Arts study talked about something called the Torpedo Factory in Alexandria, Virginia. Alexandria is on a par in the same region of population as Bend, Oregon. The Torpedo Factory, in that study that I quoted from two thousand and fifteen, generates a hundred and eleven point eight million dollars in industry, supports two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight full-time equivalent jobs, generates fifty-six million dollars in household income to local residents, and provides seven point five million dollars in local and state government revenue. And that offers, and they give subsidized rehearsal and studio space to physical and performing arts. It's a pretty amazing model for us. So, cultural tourism, going back to the list. If Central Oregon is known as a mecca for the performing and the physical arts, people can come here to purchase art and watch art. That affects the number of visitors, and it affects the amount of dollars they spend here. Moving down, obviously, a central place for the arts increases retail, hospitality, accommodations, small business development, jobs, jobs training, and tax revenue. Who are we? We became a nonprofit just at the end of last year. We are dedicated to this notion of creating a comprehensive art facility. And we're dedicated to, you know, to serving diverse cultural needs through music, performance, visual arts. We want to operate by a large, a broad coalition of regional entities, and we're really interested in fostering cultural tourism and art as business and an economic engine for our region. So, what do we envision? It is part of the brochure, the specifics are in there, but basically, we want to be a self-sustaining year-round performing and visual arts center. We want to have a venue that enables touring shows to enrich this region. We want to create a facility that meets the needs of our existing regional arts groups, and we want to be an incubator for arts-based small business. And my next slide is not happening. Here we go. I want to go back. Where are we in the process? Well, like I said about five minutes ago, we became a nonprofit. And for the last two months, we have been reaching out to every single arts entity and representative and government agencies we can talk to. You're part of that process. We are interested in hearing what people specifically need, and where we describe ourselves is we're in the concept formulation stage, right? So, we have to establish what our functional requirements are. We have to establish our financial viability and sustainability for this entity. We need to identify the cost and capability trade-offs. We need to establish a business operating concept, who's gonna run this thing? And prepare a program plan, budget, and schedule. So, to that end, we have talked with several vendors who will help us with this study. We've chosen one, and we are continuing discussions with that to formulate that study. Why are we here, why are we talking to you guys? We are not moving forward. Well, I'd love to tell you that. There we go. Basically, we wanted to bring you up to speed and say, hi, this is us, we exist, and this is what we're doing. But we also wanted to encourage your participation in defining what this cultural arts center could be. We also want to enlist your support and your goodwill in building the coalitions. You guys know the players in a way that perhaps we don't. We would like you and your staff to be part of the process. And when it's time for us to make formal requests for financial resources, we'd like your support in that.
Wow. Hitchy.
So, the Central Oregon Center for the Arts, I think in two lines, if I had to say a bullet, it's going to be a cultural wellspring, and it's going to be an economic engine for our region. I think it could add greatly to our region, and it's a good time to start pursuing it again. So, if you have any questions, any thoughts, we would, we're going to take notes, pick your brains. I don't know if Laura or Michael has anything else to add to my presentation. Also, this is Larry Sewell, he is on our board also. So, if I missed anything, or if there are any questions, or if you have any thoughts or observations, I'd love to hear them.
So, I have a couple of questions. I'm a little bit familiar, I've been to the Holt Center in Eugene before.
Yes.
Is that...
That's one of our models.
Is that kind of your model, or is that similar size, or what?
It's a very similar size. That's exactly what we're looking at. Twelve-hundred-seat odd theater that is acoustically perfect for our symphony and for touring shows. A mid-sized theater of about six hundred seats, again, acoustically perfect for music, and with the flexibility to put in other performing arts. A smaller black box theater in the two hundred-odd seat, plus galleries, restaurants. We want this building, or this complex of buildings, to be self-sustaining. They don't want to be open at night and then languish during the day. So, we're looking at a model that is working during the day and during the night. Laura, what are the other ones that we're looking at, besides the Torpedo Factory, the Gallo Theater?
Gallo Theater in Scottsloss County, California.
Yeah, that's another good model that we're working off of.
Anything else in the Northwest that's kind of a...
Boise.
Boise?
I was able to, I didn't go to a performance or anything, but at the Torpedo Factory. So, it's across the river from Washington, D.C. I was able to go to lunch there with Craig Polk and Jay Sullivan one time, and we were there for Association of Oregon Counties, the national counties. So, but that was an existing building. So, first, you said observations, that's existing building, redeveloped, shorefront, wonderful property. You know, the REI and the Old Mill has basically been spoken for already, so we don't really have that place in Central Oregon.
Right, we would have, we'll have...
We're talking new construction, no matter what.
We're talking new construction and new land. Yeah, so where to put it? That's always, that's typically the second question, is where are you gonna put that? We have received several ideas, but that's part of our study, is to figure out what is the best place. We can, we could go across, you know, about this, choose the place, build it there, or look at various places. And if you have suggestions of areas you think we ought to be looking at, we'd like to hear that. It's one of the reasons we're here.
Well, it's gonna be easy to think big, but yeah, getting down to who's gonna fund the building and how big is it?
And how is it gonna operate it?
Campus, or a...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be interesting.
It is. And again, concept formulation stage. So, we are very aware of that.
I know also, you mentioned touring companies, and I was looking, Jersey Boys is on a tour right now, and I noticed that one of the places it's showing is in Yakima. And Yakima is not a huge area, and I was just wondering what kind of facility they have there, or what, is that similar to this also? I would think it would be size-wise even smaller, but maybe it isn't, I don't know.
We do know that in order to get Broadway, you have to have at least twelve-hundred? A twelve-hundred-seat house with certain technical abilities that nobody in Central Oregon currently has. Even the Matters Performing Arts Center doesn't have that size or that capacity. So, I don't know what Yakima has, but we'll go sniff that out, because if Broadway's going to Yakima, that's actually encouraging for us.
Yeah.
Because it gets them off of the I-five corridor and brings it closer to us. So, I find that encouraging, thank you.
We're not that far from Boise either.
Right. Boise's another one, yeah.
Another question I had is, so, what, is there kind of a population base that it takes to support these? I mean, there must have been, we're not the first one to do it, so what, is there kind of economic studies that revolve around that? Because I always think with Eugene, I think the Eugene Springfield metropolitan area is probably closer to four hundred thousand, is my guess, or three fifty anyway. But it's, and then it's close to the valley, to other cities. Is there any thoughts on, because we have expanded a lot just in the last twenty years, so...
Right, so our population currently is about, what, two hundred and forty thousand in the tri-county region?
Include, is that Crook and Jersey?
Yeah, that includes the three counties. You know, I am not aware that we have looked at a study. Laura, are you, have we tried to dig up that information yet?
Yeah, we're working on that right now, especially, we're doing some grant writing that wants those kind of specifics. We will have those, glad to share those with you, too, as we...
Yeah, so those comps.
We are doing that.
Okay. So, that's a good thing for us to bring to this kind of meeting. I appreciate that, Phil, thank you.
Anna, just as a follow-up to that, when we did the two thousand and two feasibility study, which, you know, there was a group that was hired to review that, I mean, turn your clocks back eighteen years, they said that it was feasible in two thousand and two, and I can't imagine it's less feasible in two thousand and twenty than it was eighteen years ago.
Yeah, and that's two booms ago. That's how I refer to it, I mean, we didn't even know about the two thousand boom.
Right.
And I'm with you, like, you know, it's just all been, just, you know, you're trying to like get it into one of the one of the niches where you can make it happen.
Interesting. Wonderful.
Any other questions or observations, or things that you think we should be thinking about?
So, you actually have someone currently that is doing an analysis of the direction you're gonna be going?
We're interviewing a team that's been selected to do the feasibility study. It will take approximately, I would say, seven to ten months to complete. We were supposed to have an official one-to-one interview this week, and they're postponing that.
Kind of holding off on that, yeah, just like a lot of things.
Well, it's good that we were able to meet today, kind of get...
Yeah, I was super pleased, I really thought this was gonna be called up.
We have proper seating?
Yeah, we're spread out here, yeah.
Thank you to Sharon.
Wipe this off when I get done. Yeah, thank you, Sharon, thanks for helping me with this, I appreciate it. Thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it. And our contact information is there. If you have any thoughts, anything that pops up in the middle of the night as you, if this comes across your trans, and please reach out, we'd love to hear what you have to think. This is a big brain trust, your staff has a big trust of experience in this community, and we really want to build those sort of connections.
You know, one of the things that's advantage, you know, or helpful in the county is we represent more than the city of Bend, so we represent, you know, Lapine and Redmond and Sisters, and so it is kind of that jurisdiction. Plus, we have a lot of relationships with the other two counties that you're talking about. And we do think about land, I mean, we have, Deschutes County has land in different places, and so that's always a possibility, I guess. So, I think you've done a good job. We'd gotten your brochure a month ago or so, so we knew something was, you know, you're up to something. you're up to something. So this is good to have a, kind of a briefing on it today.
Good. Good. I'm glad the timing is good. And we will keep you updated by all means. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for coming today.
Nice to see you.
Okay, so... So I don't see Dr. Conway yet. So should we go ahead to the Deschutes Children's Foundation? Are they available?
Amy Ward is here.
I'm here. I was expecting Linda Swearingen and Tia Lewis.
Okay. Right. In eight minutes? Okay. I know. That's what you get when we're very exact with our timing.
Whitney is here.
Whitney, would you like to do your presentation?
I'm actually waiting on Representative from COIC who's going to provide the results of the update.
Okay. Okay. And Tanya is not here yet, so we'll skip that. And Peter Russell. I don't see Peter either. So maybe, I guess we have to take a few-minute break.
Commissioners, there are one or two other items we could do.
Oh, he's ready.
Okay. Mr. Anderson.
And I'm not sure Commissioner Henderson or Dave can jump in if this is not an open session item, but more for executive session. But Phil and I did have a meeting with the Veterans Village Group on Thursday. And I'm not sure if you wanted to give an update on that or do you want to save that for another day?
Well, yeah, I think it's good to at least bring up what we need to talk about, which we were going to try to do on Wednesday, right? So we're, our idea was we were going to try to resolve something. So the, we had a pretty full, I don't know, discussion with a lot of the people from the city about the issues that the city would have to deal with regarding the Veterans Village if we were going to try to cite it at the, on the public safety campus. It sounded like they, there would be a zoning change or a, or kind of a rewrite, and maybe Tom has a better way of saying that, of the, of the, it's a, what's it called? Multiple, it'd take a wording change to allow the individual units there is one part of the requirement. And then the second would be the, if we were going to change something like the not build the security, the road, the additional security road or whatever it's called, if that, if they were going to amend their rules to not require that, that would take another change. It seemed to me, and my interpretation was it was all possible. And, but it does take some time. And so there's a question about that. But I think ultimately, we're going to have to decide if we want to go forward. The other thing that's been changed a little bit is that I think from my perspective was we're going from maybe a development partner to, we're being asked by the Bend Heroes Foundation to also be an operational partner in terms of contributing yearly to it. So I think we'd have to, but I, we'd have to kind of decide whether we want to do that and whether we can do that. So that, so we were trying to get it, I think, in front of us Wednesday to actually talk about it further.
Yeah, dive into the details and, and it just, if nothing else, a heads-up today. But I, I think one provision that we're still sort of waiting on is whether Senate Bill 4,000 or House Bill 4,001 gets resurrected in a special session. That was the homeless sheltering bill that, that among other things, provided for sort of a direct route to citing a homeless shelter or homeless housing outside of the, either the city or county land use process. So that seemed to have a lot of momentum in the short session and could be part of a special session if it was convened to bring back, which would obviously shortcut many of the land use code changes that the city would have to undertake in order to allow this to go forward. So that was one consideration. But beyond that, I think it's, you know, for us, it is a little bit simpler of an equation than it is for the city, given that we don't have to wrestle with the land use rules. But the commitment from us would be one of the land for a specified period of time at the public safety campus, funding as Commissioner Henderson mentioned. And then probably less complicated would be the commitment of sort of in-kind assistance that we already do in other venues with Behavioral Health and the Crisis Team and our veteran service officers and potentially even the work center through the sheriff's office. So those are sort of the issues that we can, we can frame and have a discussion on on Wednesday to see if the board is, you know, where you're at in terms of wanting to keep pushing on this.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's a good point, the fact that a lot of services that could be utilized at this facility are already county services. So, I mean, just acknowledging that there's a balance between, and we would pay for an onsite staff or, you know, it's just interesting how many things we may be involved in.
Well, and that's, I think...
If it's the right thing to do, yeah.
I think in, maybe in an executive session about the property and development costs and then, yeah, but that's, they do expect to have its own staff. And that's really a part of the operational feature. But, so that's where the cost, the operational cost is. But I think we are going to be, being asked to try to decide this sooner rather than later. And I, I kind of took it, Tom, that we were going to, if we decide to go forward, we'd pursue it as if we had to get all these code changes. But it could be that 4,001 passes and we could, then we would need the code changes.
I think that's correct, yeah.
The other part was, let's see, about the... Trying to think what the, there was, I've lost it. There was one other part about it that, code changes.
I know you said you liked the feedback from the Clackamas Tiny Home Village that they're doing and what that...
The two members, yeah, the Bend Heroes Foundation went up there and they were very excited about what they'd seen and how good Clackamas County had done with everything. I mean, the planning, the staffing, the financing, everything. And then the results, it had quite a few people that had transitioned through the, their Veterans Village. And they're actually into more permanent housing, which was the goal. And they also are expanding their facility, so they must have a lot of confidence in it, so.
The, one other big issue that, at least that I noticed that came out last week was there really a fundamental change in the design of the center where they proposed to hook up sewer and water to each of the units, which, which could add considerably to the cost of the facility. The, I think the design that you had seen had all the, you know, restroom and showering facilities in the centralized building. But because there's unknowns relative to the rock that they'd have to get through to lay, you know, sewer and water lines to each of the units that were laid out, that could have an impact on the cost. So they were, what we saw last week was just kind of an outline of the potential cost. And they were going to go back and provide us a lot more detail on how those estimates were derived to really hopefully provide a more, a higher comfort level on the amount that we would be expected to contribute to the project.
Thank you. Did you have another issue, Tom?
Well, you have some CDD folks, I think.
Okay.
Since then, so we could probably get back.
All right. Tanya, would you like to go and, since we're still waiting for one of, Linda, I believe, isn't here yet?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Apologies for not being right here. I was watching the thing on the video and then came running over, so...
Don't run. It's icy out there.
Watch carefully over. Tanya Salzman, Associate Planner. I'm here today just to check in with the board regarding nursery, school, and daycare proposed text amendments. As stated in the memo, that's in your packet. The board has previously expressed interest in pursuing legislative text amendments to allow nursery and daycare childcare facilities as a use permitted outright in the zones where they're currently a conditional use. So the idea is that this would not add childcare facilities in zones that aren't, that it's not there already. It would just change that conditional use to a outright permitted use, acknowledging that many sources have kind of done the research, acknowledged that the county is essentially a childcare desert, the rural county. It's very difficult to get childcare and get it out there. And so this is, would be a step to making it a little bit easier for people to get to establish those businesses. So the purpose of this, this meeting is just to check in to see if the board would like me to proceed with these text amendments. Obviously, the timeline is a little bit in flux today. But if, if the board would like me to proceed, we would, well, originally, we would like to have a public hearing with the Planning Commission on April 23rd. I realize that's in the air right now. But first, I guess it would just be good to hear if the board would like us to proceed in general with these amendments. And we could provide more details in a specific work session at that time.
This was something that I'd hoped we could actually do something. So I thank you for bringing this today. And, you know, April 23rd, that's what, five weeks away?
Yes. And of course, there is the caveat that the Planning Commission meetings, a couple of them have been canceled. And we're, April 23rd is still, I believe, on the calendar at the moment, but it's a little bit iffy. So perhaps normally, we would have to initiate a 35-day notice with the state. And that would be this Thursday, I believe, the 19th. So I'm not sure if we want to hold off on doing that or pursue that, you know, with the idea that there would be a hearing on the 23rd or not.
Nick Lee, like, Deschutes County Community Development Director, if you're prepared for us to proceed, we can certainly do so and schedule it for the 23rd. And if for any reason we needed to postpone or reschedule or continue the hearing, we could have a quorum of the Planning Commissioners, open the hearing and continue it to a date certain. We're really just seeking your feedback.
See how it works, yeah.
If you'd like for us to proceed, we're prepared to do so. In fact, I think most of the amendments are already prepared as well.
Yeah, we would want to have a work session with them first. So that leaves a little bit of scheduling, but I'm sure we could figure that out.
Couple of questions just about the concept. I share with Commissioner Dare that interested in having, you know, the ability of having daycare, childcare in various areas of the county where it's been difficult. Is, do other counties allow this? And did you happen to check and is this, these code changes similar to what other counties are doing or what template did you use?
I don't think we've actually used any template. We've just created this based on our experiences with the one in Sun River, the Sun River Business Park we just had this past year, where it was a higher bar to get over to, to get approval for it to just be not right permitted use. I think it's pretty standard that daycares, childcares, nurseries, these types of uses are conditional use permits in a lot of county and rural zones for compatibility purposes. And they've been like that probably since they were initially allowed in the 1980s is my guess. Since we're in a new era, we just thought we would take a step toward making them just not right permitted use this with site plan, which has, which is very important for the transportation analysis. I look at Peter Russell, our Senior Transportation Planner, is it's a very small step to get over to just move it from a conditional use to permitted use. But to allow it into a whole new zone would be, would be another, another step. But I think we're doing as much as we can with, as quickly as we can if the board supports that, this approach.
And which zones are those?
The zones are listed in the memo here. There's approximately, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, I see down here, okay.
About, about a dozen where they're currently a conditional use. And I could certainly do a little more research on other counties as well. I guess one thought out there is that as we've acknowledged, our rural county is very different from other rural counties. So it is a little bit of different kind of situation. There are more concentrations of population. So it's, it's a little bit different, but I think it's, it's a worthwhile thing to pursue.
So everything in this, in this chart is, this is a list of all the zones that are affected or would be affected?
Those are the zones that they're currently...
And is there, or maybe this is what gets heard at the Planning Commission level, but would there be discussions about, well, maybe some of these zones makes more sense than others or, I mean, is that something you could see possibly happening or?
It could certainly be part of that discussion.
I mean, I don't have any, I just asked the question. I don't have any answers on it. Good.
Great. Well, thank you. I think this was on our, one of our goals for 2020, wasn't it? Because we are in the desert of childcare for people that are working. So what we can do to help, I think it's important.
So I support kicking it off. And just like you said, Nick, you know, if it gets bumped just because of timing and missed meetings, that's fine. But yeah, kicking it off today is fine. Could be an interesting discussion, what does it really mean in some of these zones? I think of the, you know, rural commercial zone, you know, those Roslin Pine Forest, Deschutes Junction areas. I don't know that we've ever had anybody apply and they're not really set up for that. But, you know, it might spark some conversation and get, get something going.
Great.
Tom has one.
Tom?
Yeah, just kind of a basic question. So all of the zones that are listed there are kind of unique, sort of one-off sort of zones that are, you know, either part of a urban uncorporated community or some of the, what about like fundamentally, some of the other zones, just like RR10 or MUA? Are those, what are the rules currently for, not, not a daycare center, but like a home-based, unobtrusive sort of facility?
Well, in any of the zones here, you can still apply for a home occupation to do kind of a small scale in the home as, as any other home, home, home occupations, excuse me. So that's how that would be addressed in those zones, which are, for instance, RR10, you know, that's primarily residential. It's not, you don't see businesses here and there, but you can do it through a home occupation, which is a different process than this.
But would that then involve a conditional use permit also in some of those zones? Or would that be similar to what we're trying to accomplish here through a, kind of a, merely a site plan?
It would be through the, the home occupation process, right? I mean, that is a land use decision, correct?
If I may, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Peter Gatawski, Deschutes County Planning, just to supplement what Tanya has offered. It really depends on the number of kids. So if there's a type one through type three home occupation, so the more trips, the more presumably the children, the more potential impacts, the level of review would increase. I've looked over the last five years in our records and we haven't seen, type one home occupations, if it's, you know, I think under five, it's a use permitted outright. We have not entitled a home occupation for childcare in the last five to six years. But to your question, Tom, if, if one had a large property, the code would allow it, but for the type three, it would be a conditional use permit.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It just seems if part of the, part of the rationale for wanting to head this is to make it easier, make it less onerous for someone to start childcare service, you know, if it was small, you know, that not a facility that involved parking and all the things that go along with that, but a, a home-based, you know, say six or fewer kids, I don't know the rules, to make it, to streamline that a little bit, if it was conditionally used to ratchet that down to something less onerous may give you a little more bang for the buck in terms of the overall overriding goal here.
Yeah, we, we can certainly look at it, the, the piece that's critical for home occupation is it has to maintain an outward appearance that it's, that it's a house. So I think there's a point if you have, when you reach that level of type three where there's, I'm just, 10 or more, more kids running around, you're talking about probably a pretty significant outdoor play facility. All of a sudden, that can, may run into problems in terms of maintaining the consistency with the code. So it looks, it's still, you know, one demonstrates it's maintaining the appearance of a, of a single-family home. But we can certainly look at it and introduce it in the code to warrant the conversation.
Well, that brings up the concept of really kind of having the survey of all the zones. You know, it's like, you know, the table here is real good about conditional and outright. But, you know, the rest of the zones, just so you have a complete picture, you know, so that could be discussed at the Planning Commission. And then next time we, we see it, you kind of have the lay of the land, explaining home occupancies, but other ones that are outright by state, are banned outright by state law. So just a full survey would be interesting.
Yeah. And the other thing that's worth noting is one can have at a residence, you know, one can have five unreal, I think it's up to five unrelated people at the house. So I think there's a, there's a reason, and it's not to diminish Tom's inquiry, because I think it's a good one. And following up on Commissioner DeBones' perspective is how are each zone situated to accommodate or potentially address this, this childcare desert? But I, if I had to make an educated guess, in the rural county where the threshold is below five or six kids or whatever it might be, the code allows that to happen outside of whatever registration needs to take place at the state. But nonetheless, we can, we can provide just that analysis. So the Planning Commission, the board, interested public can see how our zones operate and where those thresholds are. And to the extent that they can be modified, we would put that in a position for the commission and certainly for the board.
Remember, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, let's go ahead.
I just got a roll. James Lewis had sent us a scan of the 1968 land use survey, or something it was called, and page nine, and it has a whole paragraph on recommendations about a daycare center to be established in Deschutes County from 1968, and a couple paragraphs about it. So it just sounds so much the same sometimes. So I was able to print out one of those pages, so it's in the bottom of page nine, it's a PDF we had recently. And you could maybe give that to the Planning Commission, too?
So I get, what I was gonna say is, so most of the time when we're discussing things like marijuana production, we're talking about MUA 10 and rural residential, or MUA and then rural residential 10, and that, that's not even in the chart, right? Those are not even in this, these charts. And so what's in these charts are kind of what I consider kind of exception areas, like there's a lot less of them than there are. So that, yeah, I'd like to see it also, the kind of the big scope of where, what we're talking about, like a map that shows those areas. Is that what you're talking about, Commissioner DeBones?
Oh, yeah. All zones, yeah.
We can certainly provide that, and, yeah, it's a great, great check-in moment.
Maybe acreages and just the whole picture.
Excellent. Thank you, Tanya.
Great, thank you.
So I noticed that Dr. Conway is in the room. And is this a good time, Dr. Conway, for you to catch us up to date? Before your phone rings?
It is ringing a lot. This is a better time than when I'm not here. Most parsimonious answer to your question. I think Whitney Hale's gonna join me, and Morgan Emerson may be here in a minute. I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we were on deck for this today. So what can I do for you?
Well, I know you, we had a conversation last evening about the governor's call to the mayors and commissioners for the entire state, and the fact that she took feedback. But originally, when I talked to you, you explained that we were short, or we were requesting, the hospital was, the 30,000 nasal swabs, and so that was part of my message, and that we have 40 ventilators in the tri-county area, of which 37 of them are at St. Charles?
Yes, it turns out that when they've gone back into their inventory, there's a few more than that.
Oh, good.
Not many more than that. St. Charles is doing a major re-inventory of all their surge capacity, and they have their, most of their medical staff working on, working on a surge plan today. I've been in frequent communication multiple times a day with Dr. Jeff Absalon, who's the physician, executive, senior physician at St. Charles. I'm hoping by the end of the day that we will know what that plan is and what their shortfall of things like ventilators and whatnot else are. The issue with swabs process, we're addressing that in multiple ways. We have requests still pending with the other partners to see if we can find any other swabs available in this area or inventory that's shippable. So far, to no avail. OHA has articulated again that they do not have any they can send us.
I did forward the needs on to Congressman Walden's office this morning, and they were made aware of all of our shortcomings in Deschutes County, and that, actually, I'd asked for like 20 more ventilators. I don't know if 20 is adequate, but I mean, you know, I just thought I'd give them a number, if we have 40, you know, another 20, because of our population growth, maybe that wasn't ever allocated for in the past.
Yes, that, that's a good idea.
And then why are, why are we waiting so long on our test results? That was a question that the three of us had.
So there's, well, it's a, it's a complicated answer. And then the other question I understood that's pending is whether or not we'd stand up a central testing venue. So I think the kindest way of describing the testing at the national level is a patchwork with many of the patches missing. The lab capacity at national level, at state level, is nothing like many public expectations and many sort of public announcements have been made. Our current experience is that St. Charles is having the best luck. They're working with the University of Washington directly. They're able to handle the number of swabs that they're needing to submit tests, they're needing to submit daily, which is less than 100, as I understand. The other commercial labs, while they initially had, the, one of them had communicated to us a week ago Friday, that they could handle a large volume, and they'd have a 48-hour turnaround once they transferred that to their central laboratory, which is out of state. Since then, they've become, for whatever reason, they've communicated that the maximum they can handle is 50, and that there could be a turnaround time of up to one week. And indeed, the number of clinic, a number of clinics have submitted specimens through that and one other commercial laboratory, and have received almost no results back from any of them. So basically, almost all the commercial tests that were submitted by a recommended pathway have not come back. St. Charles has asked over the weekend whether or not other entities wanted to do testing, they've had a conversation with UW, whether other entities that want to do testing could separately be doing that to UW, and UW does, apparently does not have the capacity to do that. On the upside, Summit BMC has stood up a very systematic triage system, which is initially telephonic and helping sort out whether or not patients need to be seen at all. And then, once they're seen, testing them if they're, if they're ill and meet the criteria, test them first for flu, and if they don't, if they're not tested for, if they're not positive for flu, then they retest them for COVID-19. The disposition of those tests is, and who will, who will run the tests and how quickly we'll get them back is still being worked on. What are the other questions, please?
I don't know, if you were aware of the email, someone was asking if some pharmacies, some markets could actually have an hour or two for people over 60, so that they could feel comfortable in going in and either getting their medicines or buying food at a very specific time. They had suggested like 6:00 AM to 9:00, to 9:00 AM in their letter.
Well, it's a good idea. However, doing that, one would hope that they would tidy up and disinfect things first, and then, so the reason that this recommendation is being made, or this measure is being discussed is because we know that the people that are most likely to suffer badly from a COVID infection are people that are over 60 and have a chronic illness, and then people without any sort of chronic illness, cardiopulmonary, diabetes, et cetera. The risk goes up each decade substantially with age, so that people in their 80s are at particular risk whether or not they have an underlying illness. However, if there's gonna be some cohorting of their shopping time, you want to be sure that surfaces have been disinfected, and you'd still have to maintain social distance between the shoppers. So, so having a whole bunch of older people line up close together outside in the cold might not be the best way to address this concern. That's, I hadn't heard about this before. It sounds like a reasonable idea, but they have to, if they're doing that, they have to attend to the other measures as well, disinfection, social distancing. And I think if it's a pharmacy, it would be good to combine that with just maybe having some entry health screening and finding out whether people are, any of the people are feeling ill, and then deflecting them so that their triage are roughly assisted in a medical.
I'll forward you the letter. It's from Dr. Alan Erdl, who worked at, like, Overlake Hospital in Bellevue. He worked at Mercy in Sacramento. He has a wide range of experience and saw that this was something that was actually being implemented in Australia, so.
I think it's a good idea, as long as the other things at the same time.
Right, exactly. I know, it's just not one thing, but it's, it's an idea.
The other, so we've been looking at surge, and that's based on a number of models, and there's, and then I've reached out to other providers that may be able to have some capacity if things become more difficult. The other thing that there's been a lot of discussion in over the last 36 hours particularly is since the announcement about closing schools, so I guess it was late Saturday, and then a discussion last night, I understand, with the governor, I don't know if you're on, during that time, whether or not to close restaurants.
Yes.
Of a venues, et cetera. I asked Council Doyle this morning whether or not we have the authority to do that locally, and as of whenever I heard back from you, Dave, the answer was no. Is it still a no? Okay. I think that may have been preempted, though, because the, the first, I'm sorry, I don't know the name of the committee, but Vice Presidents Pence and Doctors Tony Fauci and Ambassador Dr. Deborah Brex convened a meeting of the sort of high-level representatives of many different entities, governmental, scientific, and medical, today. And during that, it was announced a recommendation, they were, we were reminded of a recommendation by CDC and NIAID, which is the center within NIH that Dr. Fauci heads, that such things as anywhere where there's more than 10 people should be curtailed. And then it turned out in the fine print, which Dr. Fauci read to everybody, it was on the, the conference, which just happened an hour ago, he pointed out that that included closure of in-person dining at restaurants and drinking in bars. And then I understood, as I was on the way over here, Whitney pulled it up, but apparently there's also been an announcement on the tail end of that, that the federal government is recommending the closure of those, so I hope that the.
The governor is going to make an announcement at 2:00 this afternoon, which we were part of a call this, at 12:00.
So, so we, we don't necessarily need to deal with that here, then? We're hoping.
I don't think we do. The governor's going to make an announcement.
Okay.
So it'll be very clearly laid out at that time.
Well, it seems like a sensible measure. Certainly, it's outside my lane, but the implications for places like coast Oregon and central Oregon are economically will be substantial, and we have to be sensitive to that.
Right, most, when I was on the call, they started with eastern Oregon, all the counties, then they finally got to Deschutes, and most everyone really felt that you shouldn't be closing the restaurants, because at least allowing to go food, so many people rely on picking up their dinners, picking up their food from, you know, and it would be incredibly damaging for a lot of our, our community. So that was, that was, I heard that same story repetitively last night.
Well, I think that, that concern was accommodated in the New York City Board of Health rule, which closed them for eat-in, but permitted them to sell, take out. And I don't know what's being considered by Oregon, but that seems like a reasonable compromise.
Yes.
Then, on a related note, one of the major concerns nationally, and I'm not actually up on, we had school, school district administrators on the phone on Friday in our executive council, but I'm hoping that by now, within Oregon and our local areas, that we've been able to sustain the reduced costs and free school breakfast and lunch programs that are critical for many, many poor families in the schools.
Yeah, they have the schedules out, but it still can be impactful for people to actually get to the school at 11:30 at, you know, every day to pick up, yes. So, yeah, it's definitely been posted for people, but, you know, you, you, you know, you worry about those people.
And well, and a related concern, I actually don't know, and I haven't gotten much of an answer to this, asking a couple of partners, but programs like Meals on Wheels that deliver, deliver food to shut-ins and particularly seniors, I'm hoping there's some way of standing up more of that. And perhaps that would be tying those two together, restaurant, eat-in closures, and providing, pushing food and delivering it to the children that rely upon those one or two meals a day, depending on which program they're in, and people that are shut-ins now because of self-quarantine, or like the closure, closure orders have just been issued in the last hour for six California counties to shelter in place. That'd be potentially having some infrastructure where we safely, both the food safety and then also the disease transmission potential is managed, but work out a way of delivering, delivering food to at least those categories of people, and that might also take some of the economic sting out of the closure of many of these places.
Yes, definitely.
I won't comment on the wisdom of taking the same approach for bars.
Well, okay.
So I've, I've got a few follow-up questions. So I've talked to a physician that was, was very interested in the idea of an independent testing facility, separate from medical offices, separate from the hospital, a place where people could just literally go and get tested. It sounds like there's two problems with, or maybe three problems with that locally. One is, we'd have to find a place, and two would be, there's no swabs, and three, there's nowhere to send the swabs when they're, when you've done the swabbing. And I guess my question is, should, is it, do you believe it's a good idea to try to find, have a place like that? And second, can the county do anything to facilitate that?
Well, the county's already done things to facilitate it. Sergeant Garibby and the emergency MAC staff, Doug Kelly from EMS Fire, Redmond Fire, and Sergeant Garibby had already done an inventory of potential places that are around the county, some of which are on county property. So I don't think the place to put it is really a terribly vexing problem.
So just so I'm clear, you're saying that.
I'm trying to comment on these in order.
Well, I know, I'm, I'm taking, so the first one is, the county staff have looked into some locations where this could happen.
Locations.
That's, okay.
And then that was one of the inputs for, at the request of the largest volume clinical partner, Mosaic Medical, Friday morning, the CEO of Mosaic Medical, Megan Hayes, reached out to me and asked if we could have a meeting of, if I, if I could organize a meeting of all the major clinical providers, which we did late in the day on Friday. And then we asked for the status of different testing being stood up. And what emerged was really a sort of a voluntary star pattern around, around the county. I don't have input yet from Crook or Jefferson. So you have multiple entities that are already standing up that capability, including Summit Medical, BMC, High Lakes on the west side, Mosaic is willing to stand up in at least some of their locations. I don't know the name of the urgent care clinic, but the attending physician from it that's urgent care clinic that's just a block or two east of the market of choice where Colorado divides.
Right there.
It's, that's a urgent care center that was conveniently built in a building that used to be a drive-in bank, so they have a, they have a built-in infrastructure to be able to handle some sort of drive-in thing. So there's a number of places that are, that are standing up on their own, and the only barrier to that being highly functional is testing volume. And then we go back to, that the fundamental problem is if you don't have enough swabs, you don't have S gaps, and you don't have a decent throughput with a good response time in any commercial labs, then there really wouldn't be any point in doing that. Now, once, once there's, that's more clear, hopefully in the next few days, I don't think I'd want to preclude private, I mean, private enterprises, stand. don't think I'd want to preclude private, I mean, private enterprises standing up. I don't think we want to preclude different people that have already taken the trouble organizing this. But I think adding whichever provides the highest capacity, adding more throughput in one or more of those, and making it clear where that is, is a good idea. And the advantage of having sort of a star pattern where it's distributed around the county, as long as they have equal access to laboratory services or rapid access to laboratory services and quick turnaround, means that people have to travel less distance. So I don't, I don't think, I think that's a, that's a good idea. The other thing that's a real hope is that St. Charles does have the lab space, and the techs, lab space, including bench space, the surfaces to work at, to stand up testing locally for us, which would be very, very helpful. I forwarded a formal request for OHA to provide the state lab, to provide in Hillsborough, to provide the guidelines, the occupational safety and health guidelines, spacing, the testing protocols, and open the pipeline for them to get commercial kits to be able to do it there. That, I sent it late Friday night. Saturday morning at eight AM, Denadrum, who's the liaison to the county's OHA, had already passed on to the state lab. And as of two calls ahead yesterday with her back fill, Hillsborough does have that question, and they are trying to, to service it. I hope that we'll get some, some update later on today.
So say a week.
I don't know if they have, I don't, I know they don't have kits to send, so, so that would be still something that would require attending to.
So if I could summarize, it sounds like we have a variety of entities that are gonna have, that are trying to have the ability to do initial swab, but they need swabs. And then there's, then there's the issue of where you send those. And we're trying to get OHA to do that. And OHA, they spoke to us last Monday at AOC. So is there anything the county or we can help with? I mean, as Commissioner Dare said, she talked to one of the congressional offices. I would think the federal government is pushing something out, but I don't know. That's what we hear on TV. Is that, I don't know if that's true. But are those kind of how you see this emerging?
If I could make one, it's not really a correction, but I may have given a misimpression. I'm not aware of any clinics, and not St. Charles, that have stopped testing because they don't have any swabs. There are different ones are running very low. And St. Charles has made a decision, what we call triage, where their intake now, they had, they have around three thousand swabs, and they've allocated a, the minor fraction of those to, to hold aside, until they have more swabs, to hold aside to cover any employees that might be exposed and need to be tested. And then in equal parts, half of them for inpatients. They had originally thought they would hold all of them for inpatients, but a half for inpatients. And then the other half for people that are outpatients but quite ill by a number of medical criteria. So that's an example where in that regime, they're going to stretch out the length of time that they can meet those two groups. Problem with that is that that does actually, it's, it's a very effective triage strategy for helping to find and provide care for the people that are very ill, or fairly ill. But it doesn't give us, the other reason it's important to test as much as possible is that there's no granularity at a national, state, or county level about the frequency or distribution of cases. So the other reason that it's important, even if you have people that don't require medical care, anyone that's infected has the potential to be transmitted disease. So we're flying blind as far as where to concentrate locally at a more granular level.
Yeah.
Where to concentrate outreach.
So I guess that's where I'm going with it, is I think there's, what this physician was asking was really for the ability for anybody that wants to get tested to go to a place like we see in other countries. Do you think that's, and what I think people want is that ability to just test. And, and I'm not sure everybody would use it, but they might like to know there is a place. We, it sounds like we don't have that capacity now. Do you think it's smart that we get that capacity? And are we headed that direction?
Yes, sir. I do think it's smart. It's something I've been asking for, for weeks. I wrote an editorial, submitted to a national newspaper eleven days ago about this very subject. It wasn't published. I actually talked to some other outlets. Your question though about what you can do locally, you know, we haven't asked the local lab why the, what the local commercial labs, why they can't do it, why they've only been allocated the paltry number, why the return is so bad. If there's, maybe you're reaching out to them, other powerful people reaching out to them and asking this might motivate them to ascribe a higher, a higher rate of return for us. I will point out that, based on the pattern so far, some of which you're, you're privy to recently as well, Deschutes County does appear to have the highest rate of positives per population in the state. So I would hope that that might be something that would underpin requests for better throughput and better return for us.
So, so when you say we haven't asked a lab, which, what labs are you talking about? The St. Charles lab or other?
We've asked St. Charles and Quest, and the two other laboratories have been asked by clinical partners what their volume is and what they can take. But we haven't challenged that and said, well, why, you know, why aren't you doing more here? Because it's really not, it's really not apropos. We don't want to wear out our relationship with them. On the other hand, if elected officials want to reach out to them and say, well, look, we, you know, we have a burgeoning problem here. We know that in, in camera, I can share other things that we know about the risk factors here versus other places that increase that concern. But that, that doesn't meet the criteria for any public sharing of information that we've published at this time.
So we could get that information as to what those labs are? I mean, I, I frankly don't even know what the labs are in Deschutes County.
Yeah, sure.
So then we'd be able to.
Morgan, we're in the process of posting the different places where you can get tested and the different labs, labs that are providing this, yes?
Correct. We're working with our clinical partners to be able to provide our community with accurate and timely information about what clinics have what capacity to test.
Good. And so that'll, will we have that in twenty-four hours? Or when do you think you'll have that?
We expect to have that, dependent upon what our, you know, what our clinical providers share with us tomorrow. And then tomorrow morning at eight AM, we plan on standing up a joint call center with St. Charles Health System to give our community a place and a phone number to call to get that information, as well as up-to-date information on what, what symptoms to watch out for, what, what would cause them to want to seek medical care and other general.
I would think that that would be something that, you know, the newspaper, TV, radio, you know, they would be, make very available to people. And I think there's a sense with, I know people I've talked to, that you can't just, if you're not feeling well, they don't, you know, they, some clinics don't really want you to come in. And they don't want it, you know, so how bad are you feeling? And what's your temperature? I think there's a lot of people that want to know, that don't really like that. They, they really want somebody to, to do something. And I don't know, it sounds like we don't have the capacity to now, but I hope we're, we're heading that direction.
There's two, there's two approaches that have been taken by different countries. One of them is testing by direction, and the other is testing on demand. The democracies, such as South Korea, have tended to go more toward testing on demand. So if it was recommended, but also on demand, they stood up drive-in testing. They had done eighty-five thousand tests within a week of their perception that there was an outbreak. One of the problems we have in the US right now is that there's a lot of messaging, the testing is either readily available or going to be readily available, but so far the infrastructure's not supporting that. And that's even when you have a very noisy person like me locally complaining to all the, all my counterparts in the, in the state government and some in the federal government that we need these supplies, that we need the tests done further. What I don't know is I don't know how commercial enterprises allocate who gets what where. So it's quite possible, once, once again, that one of the local labs or two local labs could do it. But the big weakness in, so it's great that we're coordinating, we're putting out these announcements, but we still have an underlying weakness that if a lot of people start wanting the test, for whatever reason, other than being worried well, we did, there's no point in somebody that's not ill getting tested because it really won't tell us anything and probably waste the test. But somebody that has a flu-like illness of any, any severity, it would be good to be testing everybody with a flu-like illness of any severity. But we don't want to open the gates for that right now because most of those people will be frustrated.
So, but if you did want to be tested for the flu, what, A or B, those tests are available though, correct?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So you could actually go and have that testing done.
I didn't recognize the acronym. E, what?
A or B.
Oh, right. A or B. Yes. There's, there's rapid flu testing, and that can be done with results within a couple of hours.
But you would still want to call ahead to your healthcare provider because the symptoms are so similar.
Right. So, but at least people could go and do that and like find out where they are.
I mean, I think that's what we need to confirm with these clinics, whether they're really encouraging. I mean, I know people have called in, they've been, well, what's your temperature? And, well, you don't need to go. So there's, that doesn't, that's not making people feel.
Well, all the clinics, just like St. Charles has done, I think the clinics are taking a similar approach. They're trying, so there's a distinction between containment and mitigation, but then there's a middle ground between that, which is, in order to be able to successfully mitigate the people that are ill, you have to, even if you can't, you can't put the virus back in the box, and you can't, you can't lock up each place where there's any virus, but you can slow the progression. So the mitigation strategy dictates that you detect and try to manage the people that are most ill first, and in the highest risk groups first. But the containment requires as broader knowledge as possible of where it is in the community so that we can assist them to not pass it on to their neighbors, friends, contacts, workmates. So that, so there's, there's, it's not a tension, it's just a competition for resources between those. So I cannot fault any of the clinics for using basic medical triage, but from the public health perspective and the sort of mass action of effectively containing, to the point of delaying, to make mitigation more effective, we're very vulnerable. Does that, does this make sense?
Yeah, that's real helpful.
I'm just acknowledging, I mean, today, March sixteenth in the afternoon, it's not really time to start talking about, well, I don't, I want to go get a test just because I want to know what's going on. I mean, this is kind of the possible narrow path right before there's a, you know, a spike in cases. Deschutes County has our cases here. So I'm just acknowledging that, you know, a message for the community right now is stand by, lay low. If you're feeling really sick, call. But other than that, it is not time to worry about getting a test because you want to get a test.
Right. Well, I think that, I think that having a call center would be very important though, because the, right now, and there's every reason for people with or without any medical knowledge to be very concerned.
Oh, I acknowledge that, yeah.
So, so while we talk about people that are worried but not sick, because they're worried well, that isn't intended to be dismissive. So talking to somebody that has the appropriate training, reassuring them, well, if you don't have a fever, your nose isn't running, nobody's coughing, and have a fever in your household, you don't need this test. The reason isn't just because we don't want to waste the tests, it's that if they're well, and they get tested, there's two problems. One is that if you start testing the very low, what we call prevalence population, there's a higher level of inaccuracy in the test because of the way the testing thresholds are set. But the other is, if they get a test, they say, I'm fine, and then the next day they're exposed, and then six days later they're sick, they may think, oh, I don't have COVID because I was tested last week, which is wrong. So there, there's lots of reasons for doing that. So I think in the triage process, we're doing the most we can with the material at hand. But I'd be misrepresenting the circumstance to tell you everything's, you know, peachy and that we're going to be just fine.
And I'm showing support for, you know, that triage, that, that logic of, of who's getting tested, why, and the guidance to the community is to basically, yeah.
Yeah.
Lay low right now, yeah.
Clarifying kind of the status of testings, swabbing, what the clinics are, I mean, those, that's all the kind of information that we get, you know, we've been asked about in emails or whatever. The other, the other question I had was, apparently we now have, I think it's four presumptive confirmed cases, or whatever confirmed cases, and.
So just to, to update, the state of Oregon has removed the presumptive and confirmed designation. That is no longer required. So we now just get to call them cases.
Okay. So you have four cases. And so is, when we, we were here at our last meeting, we were kind of trying to clarify at what point it goes public as to who, where, and when. And your comments were, well, if they're working in facilities or in types of places where they may have exposed, it may come out public. Are we gonna, as we have more cases, if we do, I think there's going to be a growing concern with people about knowledge. What's, is there any change in the strategy or thoughts on when that happens?
There's been no, no change in the strategy. And while after the press conference, was that Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Announcing the first case, and later on in the week, some of the press outlets, including the editorial page editor of the largest press outlet, pressed this question. And if you want, I'm happy to reiterate the answer that we provided. And then the bulletin though, published a thoughtful editorial yesterday with a concise answer to that, which is that, 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 I can't quote it, but the, the gist of it is that we will expand that as the demography permits, which is as we have, we, we can't have any cell demographically that's smaller than five on a table. So if you have ten of something, then you look at what differentiates those two. And if there's a clean division, you can talk about it. But if you have three of something and seven of something, you can't really share that because of the fear that if you have five or less, it gives enough information that people will either figure out who the person is, or more likely suspect people that they shouldn't be suspecting. So once we get to that, or if you have something like, in the note, we, we talked about a, that we sent, talked about a crowded theater. What, what was it that they used in the, in the editorial? They used a slightly different example.
I don't, I don't know that there was a specific example in the editorial, but for example, if someone who tested positive had been to, you know, a movie showing, we would be able to release that, you know, this is not the case, the individual.
But to the example that I provided, and I think that Whitney and, and Morgan did a better job of putting it to understandable, understandable prose, was if you had, so let's say that we learned that at the three PM showing of X movie in Y theater, that, that happens to be, it's one of the cheap theaters, so people pay cash, there's no credit card records. There's somebody that starts coughing and sneezing on people, and it turns out that that person, a couple hours later, that decides they're so ill that they go in and see, they seen, and then it turns out that they have this virus. That would be an instance in which we wouldn't make a public announcement about COVID. We would say, those of you that were at the so-and-so theater for the so-and-so showing should be in touch with the health department or your primary care provider. And then we take it from there. So that would be an example of something that, it's a different criterion than the demographic one to avoid privacy. And then, and the most extreme example I, I've had of this is rabies. When I was in South Carolina, we would never result, provide any risk information or plague in the West about individuals. But we had a circumstance where a pet raccoon, baby raccoon, had been filmed at a birthday party biting a number of children. And it turned out that the pet raccoon was rabid. We couldn't figure out anything about who was at the, they did the, the parents of the child didn't have a list of those people. So we actually fed the videotape of a birthday party on the local news outlets on a hourly loop until we found all the other children so that the, they could be prophylaxis for rabies. Of course, this is a lethal, lethal disease if you acquire it, but that would be sort of a very extreme example. But hopefully this illustrates the distinction between not giving demographic or risk factor information when we don't have enough to obscure who the person is, but the public health necessity of rapid notification if you have a tangible risk in a particular place or time.
I also think an important distinction there is there's something that you can do for, same as with measles and rabies, there's post-exposure prophylaxis that we can offer. And in this instance, we know that there's community spread of COVID-19 across the state of Oregon. And so we need all of our communities to be following those non-pharmaceutical interventions to protect themselves. That's important across the state.
Sure. Well. Sure, sure, well, yeah, hand washing, social, social distancing, staying home voluntarily if you're ill, certainly if you have, if you have any respiratory illness and a fever, the place to be is home, call your provider and have them sort out whether or not you really need to be seen. I, I think, once again, I mean, the issue for this, this virus is a little bit different than the rabies or plague, in that we don't have an immediate treatment, but the urgency there is that people be aware that they may have been exposed, so they don't in turn expose other people, and also so that we can figure out who it is we need to follow through time and make sure they don't become ill and then in turn infect other people. So, for example, one of our nurses would reach out and say, well, we have, we, where are we sitting in the theater, where are we sitting on the aircraft, and then deciding whether or not that really places them at risk, and then asking them if it is, if they self-quarantine, if they reduce their contact with family members, that they not go out and expose others, if they become ill to immediately come in and be, and be assessed and possibly tested, and then that'll reduce the acceleration of this problem. Sorry, I may have repeated some things here.
It's good, because we're asked a lot of, you know, we're asked by a lot of different people, what is it, you know, that the community should be doing, so...
So, once again, I understand it's, it's, it's perfectly normal, and I think reasonable to ask, well, is, and let's say that you said that it was elderly people of a certain age and certain gender, and there's only a handful of them, then everybody wants to know if Mrs. Smith next door, that looks like they're about that age, is that one? And while that may be a perfectly normal concern, the virus doesn't walk out of the house and go next door, so this doesn't really pose any, any, any hazard that's definable that we would need to warn the public about, whereas these other circumstances where we have a known exposure. So we, it's, it's a perfectly reasonable thing, but health departments are prohibited, as are medical providers, from revealing protected information like who's ill, so that's the reason why we have this level of intentional and disclosed obfuscation for cell size.
Oh, I, on a different note, on an economic note for this, someone did contact us regarding the Small Business Administration and applying for loans if your business has already been impacted, and I'm happy to report that the office out of Portland did call them, did send them the form, and things are stri, you know, starting to follow through in that area, so, for those people out there that are, you know, we have a lot of people that aren't working as much as they have been, so, it's not a, it's not an easy time.
I could sort of lobby a point. I think that the, the economic concerns are very serious, and the markets have certainly, certainly refracted that broad anxiety. I think that in the long run, the best way of reducing the economic impact of this epidemic is going to move very quickly and efficiently to understanding the distribution of the epidemic and responding accordingly, and so I don't think there's anything that's a higher priority right now, not only to protect the public's health, but also to protect the economy, than making rapid testing available as quickly as possible, and I think anything we can do, even to accelerate that only incrementally locally, by getting organized, by, if you want to, reaching out to the local labs and asking them if they can improve at least their performance would be to the good.
Thank you.
That was one of my requests, faster testing results, so, and actually more testing, and it's, you know, it's an issue across the country, so, thank you, Dr. Conway.
Thank you. Thanks for your support for many of the different things we're working on, in your interest.
Well, it is interesting what I've learned. And I'll send you that letter from Dr. Early.
Great, thanks, I'll look forward to that.
Um, for Deschutes Children's Foundation.
Just bring one, oh, can we not sit, we can stand.
You have to, yes.
Yeah, you can stand at the...
There's three of us, so, oh, okay.
Thank you for having us here today. I'm Amy Ward, I've met the three commissioners recently, I'm the executive director for Deschutes Children's Foundation. I brought with me our board member, Tia Lewis, who's been on the board for a number of years, and also Linda Swerengen, who was a commissioner during the time that the Becky Johnson Community Center was established, and then I believe she also spent some time serving on the Deschutes Children's Foundation Board of Directors as well, so, we're going to start with Linda today.
Good afternoon.
Well, and I'll acknowledge, so it must have been about 20 years ago, because that's when this is expiring, so...
Yeah, exactly.
It's good to see you, and thanks for joining us.
Well, thank you for allowing us to come and talk about the Becky Johnson Center. I had the privilege of serving on the Children's Foundation Board as well as the county commission, and one of the things that I heard month after month was the health department would say, oh, we have all these great services, but we don't have any facility in Redmond, and, and then I'd hear on the Children's Foundation standpoint, we're really in need of a facility in, in Redmond, because what we found is, well, we had the services, we didn't have a facility, and if we had facilities, we had all these different groups all around, either they were in Bend, or they were in several different locations in Redmond, and so it ended up becoming a, a real serious problem, because those most in need didn't have a place where they could actually obtain these services, and so we met the, the county commission as well as the Children's Foundation, and we said, you know what, let's partner together and solve this problem, and so the county agreed at the time to build the facility. The Children's Foundation was in charge of taking care of bringing together and screening the appropriate agencies that would serve the nonprofit agencies as well as some county services, and one of the things that we heard from both groups, from county folks as well as the nonprofits and the Children's Foundation, is we really needed a mix. We didn't just want all county, and we didn't want just all nonprofit, and so we put the partnership together, and it's worked fantastic for years, and the other thing that was important is actually having a facility that worked for everybody. You know, you can find a building, but it doesn't mean that it actually works, and so we were very thoughtful about coming up with a design that worked. I mean, of course, the Rosie Berra Center was something that we looked at and knew that that was successful, and so we just build upon that, and so it's, it's been a very important part of our commitment to the city of Redmond and Tara-Bon for people in need that need to access services, so, if you have any questions about the history, I'm certainly glad to answer any of those questions.
Thank you, Linda.
So I'll say, I joined the board meeting last week, and thank you very much for joining us, because it's really, the history, 20 years ago, got us to here, great relationship, great partnership, and my goal is to kind of get, get an agreement in place, but it's really setting the trajectory and the intention and getting it in writing for 10 years from now, you know, because we, we can get there, where this is a, a county facility that, that the Children's Foundation's, you know, doing a great job hosting all these services, but yeah, what can we put on paper for 10 years from now? That's kind of where I'm at right now.
Thank you, and thank you also for, for the record, Tia Lewis, thank you, Tony, for joining us at the board meeting last week. And our, our role today was not to get you guys to make any decision while you're sitting right here, we know we've been working through the use agreement and, and some of the, the terms associated with that, we wanted to give you this background as you are considering the, the, the work through. One of the things I think you guys recognized, and we did too, is in that agreement, it provided for an opportunity to apply for funds to help with the major expenses, but yet there was no ever funding mechanism put in place to have a, a fund, and so in addition to us getting through this particular issues with what needs to be done right away, the HVAC and windows and stuff, we'd like to also try to see if we can plan for our future for 10 years and, and find a way to fund a maintenance, or provide a maintenance fund. And I think most of you are pretty familiar with the Children's Foundation and what happens with the campuses, but one of the things that I want to make sure you're aware of is the, the county, the county's commitment to this building, it, it provides an opportunity, all of our partners, in addition to being able to co-locate and provide services to people who couldn't otherwise get to five or six different facilities, but it also, all of those nonprofits are fundraisers, and because their numbers are so good, because, as you guys know, the majority of an expense in any operation is rent, and because their numbers can look so good, they can qualify for additional fundraising opportunities just by being located on this campus, and so our partnership with the county in providing both county services as well as private nonprofit services out of that building is tremendous, and your impact to that community in Redmond by having that facility there is tremendous, and so we want to, first of all, acknowledge the county for that commitment, but also let you guys know that we're committed to seeing that through.
Take it, Tia.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'd also like to say, you know, the Becky Johnson family has given thousands and thousands of dollars over the years to this facility and, and to our nonprofit groups, and, and that was one thing that, you know, when we actually put this together, and, and we were looking for a name and to honor somebody in our community, our first thought was, well, why not Becky Johnson, everything that she's done? We had no idea that the family would adopt that facility and those programs, and, and so it's just been a real bonus, and, and the good news is, is because of that, you haven't had to pony up some expenses that you might have had to, to pay for over the years, because this, this one family in particular has said, we're committed to this building, and, and I, I would expect to see them continue to do that as well in the future.
I have a question. So, do you have four or five nonprofits now, is that, that are, use the facility, is that correct?
I believe we have eight.
Oh, eight, okay. Do you, then also, is there a waiting list of other people that would like to get in, or is, you know?
Yeah, there's a waiting list for all of our locations for interested nonprofits that would, could use more space.
So, do you, like, how do you allocate the space when you have competition, or do you ever reevaluate that, or is there certain, are you trying to fill certain needs, or...
Yeah, if space becomes available, then we do an RFP process, we reach out to current partners, people that have contacted us before with interest, and also to just our larger network of nonprofits, and we have a task force on our Board of Directors that evaluates applications, we're always looking for a mix of services, so what would be complementary to the other services provided in that building, to make sure that we aren't doubling up on any sort of offerings, and to make sure that the, a greater number of community members will be able to access a variety of services in one location.
To answer that question also, additionally, we, we closely monitor what each partner is using the space for, so that, because it is such a, a good rate, we want to make sure they're not using it for an extensive amount of storage or office-only uses that don't serve the community.
So your idea, to have it used by people, these different nonprofits serve?
Yes. So do you happen to have a number of individuals that would be served over a year?
Do you get any feedback from the eight nonprofits?
We do collect our partners' data, how, the number of clients they serve at their locations, the number of clients they serve in the greater community. I want to say that it's, oh, gosh, off the top of my head, I can't say for sure, and our 2019 numbers are just, are just coming in, I'd be happy to follow up with you, I don't want to throw out
That'd be great.
My estimate at this point, but I'd be happy to follow up.
I, I have the privilege of going through the building with my granddaughter
Yes.
Who's now 14, so...
Yes.
Yes, it's, you know, you do a lot of really good work, so...
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
For having us.
Right. Okay, so now, well, Whitney, did she leave?
She's close by, I know, but I think Andrea...
Andrea, do you want to do the presentation?
There we go.
Hi there. Thanks for having me.
Good afternoon.
Yes, you too, I know you guys are super busy. Hey, Whitney, so I will be quick. Basically, what I wanted to do is provide an update on STIF, the acronym that stands for the Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund, so those are the new state tax dollars that comes into Deschutes County for transit expansion. So if you recall, I think in early January, we got the agreement signed with Deschutes County, and we began basically the implementation of the projects since then. So just to highlight some things that have occurred since January, in terms of the big-ticket items, we launched Saturday service. The reason we can do this easily is because the fleet was sitting there on the weekends, so we implemented Saturday service on all of our regional connections, and so for here in Deschutes County, that's Saturday service for La Pine, Sisters, Redmond, and Bend. So our biggest ridership of all that is Redmond to Bend Route 24. We offered the entire February, the month, for free, just encourage people to take it, and now we're in full swing, and we're seeing that the demand is big between Redmond and Bend, and actually on a regional level, Warm Springs to Madras is the biggest ridership we're seeing, so those folks are getting into services that eventually trickle down into Redmond and Bend, so...
So you're saying Warm Springs to Madras is bigger?
Is the biggest in terms of ridership on Saturday right now.
That's the biggest, okay.
And then eventually, they, they, what we call interline, they stay on the same bus and they go to Redmond, we added the Redmond Walmart as a new stop, and we're finding that's the number one destination for the tribes and Madras, so, we started a new temporary stop, and we're finding that that's where most folks want to go on Saturday. In terms of procurement of fleet, this has been a heavy process, but we're underway. Probably by the end of this month is when we are physically going to acquire the buses, we are going through manufacturing specs, so to highlight, within Deschutes County, we are adding extra service, Redmond to Bend, so we, we already actually purchased that bus, and then for services in Bend, we are looking at 29 footers, those are about six feet shorter than the buses we operate right now for Third Street and Greenwood, and then we're going to look at basically a 20-foot bus for both Northeast and Southeast Bend, and then the 18 to 20 passenger bus for La Pine to Sun River has been purchased, so those procurements are underway. We're looking at pretty much low floor, ADA-friendly, and we're trying to keep in mind some of the, the snow conditions that we need for those vehicles as well.
Is there a route, can it define for La Pine to Sun River?
A route? Yeah, so, yep, we've worked with the community at large on, on all the different nuances of service planning, so, pretty much, we're starting at Fourth and Huntington, we're actually going to be traveling on the back end through Huntington, through St. Charles Campus, maybe eventually the senior center, we're going to make a right on Burgess, stop at the WikiUp Junction for a park and ride facility, hop on 97, and then go into the resort. The resort has given us permission to stop near their location, so there's multiple entities within the Sun River Resort, and the resort has been the most friendly to us, so we are going to be stopping more on the western side of that resort for the destination.
What about going the other way up Day Road, back to State Rec, and then Huntington?
Yeah, that was, that was definitely thrown into the options, I would say that was like scenario four or five. Once we start getting up towards that, the curvature of the road slows the vehicle down, and we cannot make the timing that we promised to the Sun River Resort and the frequency of the service, so we decided to eventually go make a right on Burgess to the WikiUp Junction, so...
What, what about the Sun River business part? What about the Sun River Business Park? Are you going in there also?
That has been, I have been in multiple discussions with the Business Park, the Shark, the Village, and I will say, the resort has been the one with the most open arms with us stopping there.
So, you know, the Business Park is something we've been involved with a variety of different things. Who do you have to ask permission of? I mean...
My liaison, because I'm not very well-connected to Sun River. I'm having Dan Yoems, who is the Board on the Chamber of Commerce, kind of helping me in those conversations. I would be totally welcome if people have connections that I don't know of to help us further. We know that the Village has not been super-friendly with us, and so, we removed a lot of the scenario planning around the Village. And then, the Shark is just a little too far away, and we get caught up in that traffic.
The Village is owned, or a lot of the facility is owned by an individual, or, I mean, it's a different ownership. But, Sun River Business Park, I mean, we're, we help fund the Sun River Chamber. We've been involved in helping them with other things. It doesn't seem like there's just one entity there that we'd be having to answer to. It would be, it seems like it'd be a matter of whether people wanted to get to work over there. I don't know.
And Sun River Business Park is a hop, skip, and a jump over to the Village. There may be a great opportunity to...
Well, they're going into the resort, so they're going right by the Village, but it seems like, I mean, I would try, there would be some people that would go to the Business Park. So, I'm surprised you have to ask somebody whether you, I mean...
Yeah, because we are, you know, we're asking for, you know, permission to essentially stop and queue at their location. And then, the further ask is an area where the driver can park the vehicle for their required 15-minute bathroom break where they can use the facility and/or, you know, purchase coffee or something. So, the resort has been the most welcoming of all the entities.
Well, I get that, but they're controlled by an individual or a couple of individuals.
Right.
I mean, there aren't a lot of people you have to ask there.
They want employees to get out there, yeah.
And they have a lot of employees, but I'm just, this service exists for employees, so I would think there would be some employees from the Lapine area that would want to go to the Business Park. There's quite a few jobs in there, but maybe not. I just, Tom, any thoughts on this?
Well, I think certainly Andrea's on the right track with the Sun River Chamber. I mean, being both a tenant as well as, you know, an advocate for the businesses in there, that they, if anyone could, you know, generate some support for this, it would be the Chamber. And you're right, I think we do have some connection and leverage with the Chamber to help facilitate that, so I think that could be it to do for us to follow up on.
Yeah, I guess that's what, in the long run, yeah, that's what...
We want to help.
It's been quite a process, so.
If you think there's a need, we would, I would think we'd want to help. And the same, to me, with the Village.
Yeah, and the Chamber was...
The Village has a lot of options.
They do. We thought we found the perfect location, but we were denied, so. The Chamber was very helpful in providing a spreadsheet of each of the employers with the number of employees and the type of shift work, which then helps me determine service planning. So, like I said, the resort with kind of a custodian, housekeeping, and dining, they tend to have a good volume that could easily help with our shift planning, yeah, so. But, updates to come. Right now, I'm working on the internal side to ensure that we've got the drivers ready to go, where we're going to station the bus, and just all of the communication pro-calls for when we actually start service, so, yeah.
Yes. And the ribbon-cutting, isn't it May 21st?
Yes, and I've got some flyers at the end that I'll pass out to the group here for you. And Derek's been doing a great job of doing the promotional and marketing of it. Just a couple other things to highlight. Right now, I am writing an RFP for a new CAT-ABL system. CAT-ABL stands for Computer-Aided Dispatch Automatic Vehicle Location, and that is the brain inside of our fleet. This is going to eventually help us launch into the 21st century for transportation, and so, this allows for same-day reservation, more mimicking what Lyft and Uber does. It will help with more of the medical side of things in terms of same-day nuances within the trip. These messages will then get to the drivers. We will have to reduce the need on human scheduling and human dispatching, and there's bigger algorithms in there to make our services run particularly on the dial-a-ride much better. So, this is the big overhaul that you helped approve in the projects. We're going out, we went to RFI first, now RFP, and we're hoping to select a vendor this summer and implement the entire fleet this winter. So, it's a big project that I'm very excited about, and it will make us, you know, up there with the big players in terms of transit. And also, from a customer-safe interface, our real-time signage will be connected with the real-time information of what's happening on the ground, the mobile apps, information on our website. Everything's going to be interconnected instead of kind of this piecemeal Band-Aid that we have right now going, so. And then, just another thing that I did want to highlight, I finally got to introduce myself to the Crooked River Ranch community. So, in early March, we sat down. Myself and my coworker Rachel introduced ourselves, and we'll be doing a bunch of outreach. Unfortunately, a lot of that has been postponed until further notice, but we are now working to see what is possible in terms of servicing that community. And then, I'm happy that ODOT is looking at changing that intersection right there at 11th. That's going to help us serve, and we don't have to be unsafe serving both Terrebonne and the ranch by, you know, waiting for traffic to clear to make those turns. So, hopefully, if things line up properly, we can make that all work pretty...
I know they're really excited to have that service down there.
Yes, so, and we have to be selective in the vehicles that we serve in that area because it is going to be heavy snow when it comes, so we want to make sure we've got the right vehicles that can serve that community. And there's some hills in that area, so we're looking at some of those details already, but they're eager to work with us. And then, we have procured some of the smaller equipment that will allow us to clean those stops. So, we were kind of hit hard this weekend. We have the staff that would help us clean stops, also cleaning our buses intensely each evening for the virus. So, right now, it's a little thin at CET, but we're doing our best. So, I did want to just segue a few seconds into what we're doing in terms of contingency planning. We are defogging our buses each evening. It is kind of a bomb, so to speak, that you release, kind of like a flea infestation. You release the bomb, I know, on the bus.
Don't tell me that.
This is a way to really go beyond what a human can do to clean our buses. That spray is released overnight, and then it is wiped down before the pre-check takes place at 4:30 in the morning, and then the bus gets onto the road. And then, obviously, we're working with all of our drivers to ensure that they're keeping healthy because they are the backbone of the operations. And so, we've been in planning mode for about two weeks now. So, those are just some of the things that we're doing. Wiping down our station pretty much every 30 to 60 minutes because of the population that comes in and out of the bus station and just the frequency of use. And pretty much, the administration has been instructed to work from home if possible. So, just to reduce the number of people coming in and out of our facilities.
Thanks for joining us today.
Yeah. No, it's been a long few days, so, but we're getting through it, so. But, yeah, that's kind of a highlight of STIF with regarding the new routes and things in Bend. The planning is underway on that, so that's kind of the internal things that we're working on with the community, and we hope to have some schedules and some routes to show you probably at the next update that I'll be invited to, so thank you.
So, I'm interested if there's any other scenario planning for that Lapine to Sun River route, just to get involved possibly. If there's a meeting, maybe give me a call, and I'd just like to get right on that.
Absolutely. And I will say that Dan Yoems has been phenomenal to work with, the Board Chair at the Chamber. He's been really helping me work the community and see how best to meet with all these folks, so.
Wonderful.
All right.
I know, the meetings that I've attended for it have been, you know, it's been a cross-section of the community there.
Good, good. Glad to hear.
With Rachel and all the work she's doing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner. This is just a work session in preparation for your public hearing on Wednesday regarding nighttime noise variance. Allow the Road Department to do nighttime activities as they remove existing pavement and then repave South Century Drive from the northbound ramps of US 97 and then west over to Venture Lane at the entrance to the Sun River Business Park. We always like to do, well, I don't know if likes the right word, but we do night paving because there's lesser disruption to the traffic volumes. It's also safer for those who are in the work zone, and it reduces out-of-direction travel for people who have to come through our construction zones if we were doing that in the day. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Cody Smith, the County Engineer, will also be at the Wednesday hearing. I will tell you, yours truly had a bad day at the keyboard and labeled Venture Lane, Venture Drive, and so, we'll get that fixed to you before you have the noise permit to sign. But, with that, I will tell you that we sent notice to everyone within 1,600 feet of the center line of the road from that distance I described of US 97 all the way to Venture Lane. I only had a handful of phone calls. Most were, well, when is the project going to occur? We have the noise variance from March 15th to September 30th, and the job itself will take two weeks. I can't pin it down when in the two weeks in that period, which is what I had to tell most folks. I said, because, you know, we have nighttime cold temperatures here in Central Oregon, and we need a certain amount of temperatures to pave, so it's just somewhere within that window, it'll only be two weeks. You're not going to be paving and ripping everything up for that entire March 15th to September 30th, so a lot of people were happy to hear that. And one person asked if it was a permanent noise variance. I said, no, it's just for the duration of the project, so. Other than that, no real question or public opposition, never received any written comments, just a few phone calls at the desk. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, you've done the outreach, and then this is a public hearing, so we may have somebody come say hi to us at that event, that meeting, the next one, yeah.
You could potentially.
Yep.
I could.
Maybe they could slip in a bus station at the West End.
Oh, there you go.
The only question I had about it was whether the, we've done this before for other night work, is there any reason there would be, you know, any objections to this as opposed to other places? I think we did it on Knott Road last year or something, and...
We've, you know, we did it on Knott Road last year. We did it on Deschutes Market Road, I think, two years ago. You know, granted, summer, people tend to keep their windows open, so they might hear a little more noise, but since they know they're getting a better road out of it, usually that appeases them, so. We've done this several times in several locations, so I can't guarantee, you're not going to have, you know, a room full of folk, but I, based on what my phone has done and my computer has done, I've heard from less than five people, so. Now that I've said that, of course...
What about the phone calls we're going to get in the middle of the project when they, like the...
Well, there's not that many.
I got a call one time that we were painting the stripes down there on a Friday afternoon and like Memorial Day weekend or something, and I got phone calls about why is a painting truck holding up everybody coming into the resort? So, I don't know what to expect. I know I didn't get any calls on Knott Road, but I'm just curious if...
Was that for Harper Bridge? Or was it before? You didn't get calls last year to do it for Harper Bridge?
No, I didn't get any for Harper Bridge. No, for Knott Road when we, after we, we did this sound thing and noise variance for Knott Road, and I don't think we got any calls, so.
Well, I know that most public agencies are sensitive to doing work on three-day weekends and things like that, so.
Yeah, it was kind of fun.
Very sensitive.
Okay.
Right, thank you for your time.
We will see you on Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Do we have any commissioner updates?
So, yeah, we had a crab feed this weekend in Lapine. You know, we mentioned it real quick in passing on Wednesday. I was able to go in and communicate with kind of the team, the volunteers. It was awkward time to really follow through at an event like that, but the crab had been purchased. We helped promote a to-go program, which was taken up by about 250 people, which was very good for the event. We still had people come enjoy their time there also. So, as I say, I thought I was going to be out of town, and I ended up being in the middle of it, but I stayed for half a dozen hours and made sure that to-go orders were ready to go. Trying to do my duty.
This could be a new position, to-go orders, ready to go.
But, you know, as I say, it was the day that the governor had made the announcement the order was bought and paid for right before that. It was a shame.
It's a huge order, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, well, that's good. I know, and it was just like one of the events in Bend that was canceled had all those flower arrangements that were actually sold by 11:00 in the morning. Somebody came in and did all the flowers for it and sold them.
Yeah, that was wonderful, yeah.
So, that was great. So, it's good. And then, I did get an email from our county chaplain, Joel Statzman, and Joel has raffle tickets. The sportsman show was canceled, and he's got some really fabulous raffle tickets. So, if anybody can reach out to him and maybe buy a few raffle tickets, that would be great just to support his organization. You could win a grill.
Well, I was able to go, speaking of the fair, to the Fair Board on Thursday, which I hadn't done for a long time, and it was interesting. I was mainly going to just see how things were working and who the different members we've appointed to, members reappointed. They were, I know Carrie said thank you for that reappointment. It was interesting to see the workings of the board and their, interesting meeting because that was the, we were dealing with the, you know, the sportsman show, and I had a good report from Jeff on all the decision-making and working with Dave about the other events and what to do and the kind of complications of, you know, contracts we got with people. But, those people that are, you know, those events are all run pretty much by vendors, so it's up to the vendors to really comply with the law about gatherings, not just the fair. We, I kind of broke it down, we provide a facility people can use, but the people using it are in some ways in charge. So, it was an interesting meeting, and we'll probably talk more about it. Also, was able to, you know, kind of walk, I had never really walked through a budget discussion like they had. What we see when we get our monthly budgets is a more summary budget than what they see, and it was kind of interesting to see some of the breakdowns, so that was good. The other meeting I went to since our last meeting, I think, was the Health, the Executive Meeting. I filled in for Commissioner Dare with the one that Dr. Conway referenced, but there was only, they tried a virtual meeting, I guess it was, with everybody calling in and learned what you learn in those, which is nobody talks when they're on the phone, so there was only Whitney and I, I think, were the only ones in the room other than staff.
It was the Central Oregon Health Council, was that what that was?
No, it was a, it's a...
It's the executive team, it's like, you know, the sheriff.
Yeah, the sheriffs, the school districts, everything, all these people had representatives.
Zach is there from the airport.
Airport. But, they all called in, so it was a very difficult meeting because nobody would answer. He'd ask a question, there wouldn't be any, you know, how it is with everybody on the phone, nobody responds.
People are going to practice that in the next few weeks, it looks like.
So, yeah, so maybe we'll learn how to do it better, but I do think there's something about being in the same room at a meeting and being able to talk. And so, I think when we, maybe we'll get really good at it, but it's kind of against nature that we're used to talking in a group, and you can read the room, and you can ask people. It's easier to go around the room and ask people, and people aren't as distracted, I think, so. But, we learned stuff that we kind of went, well, we kind of moved forward since that day, so it was interesting to see. Those, I think, the two, and then Dave, or Tom mentioned the Veterans Village, and we'll have probably more follow-up on that on Wednesday, I would hope, we can discuss it further. So, those are all my updates, I think, right now.
Great.
Yeah, so, there was an email from Mark Bennett of Baker County asking for Deschutes to participate with Sage Grouse discussion. So, it was just a message saying there's two major issues regarding Sage Grouse on the horizon, so I don't even know what they are, and Deschutes County has been involved in the past as a supportive, you know, member of eastern Oregon counties with a minimal set of Sage Grouse habitat. So, basically, it's just among the three of us if we want to get engaged or if we would have staff get engaged with this discussion. As I say, I don't even know the content of it. Do you have any information? Do you have any information about what he's referring to? So Peter has been representing us in the past.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Debone, it's just a best educated guess. What is transpiring, I know, is the Department of Land Conservation and Development needs to, is required to review the rules that were adopted into state law under the Oregon Administrative Rules. They have a requirement to review them no later than June 30th of 2020. Without getting into specifics, just because I want to be mindful of any kind of quasi-judicial proceeding that could be before the board, there has been real disappointment in the way the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife are applying their mitigation rules, both in Deschutes County for a potential applicant and in Baker County. So I've let John Jennings with the Department of Land Conservation and Development know that that's been our point of concern. The other things that have taken place really fall outside of our purview. The Bureau of Land Management, I think, is leading an effort in coordination with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, looking at biological challenges that are facing sage grouse from, oh my gosh.
We don't really even...
Yeah, it has to deal with mosquito infestations, you know, just...
More information.
More information that is far beyond our bailiwick.
Really, for us, is, yeah, does somebody want to take on sage grouse, or, you know, there's basically a request for one commissioner to get on one phone call at this point in time, so.
Okay, I mean, I don't know anything about it. I think, Peter, maybe you could get up to speed what the issues actually are, and then we'll be able, I'll follow up, but just let me know when the deal is.
I think I sent it to board. Yeah, so everybody was on here. So you've got an email that says sage grouse contacts. If you can respond to Mark.
Would you like me, Commissioner, do you want me to reach out to Baker County, to Holly Kearns, the planning director, to just...
Whoever you think would know the answer to the question.
Yeah, I'll see what the context is.
What's up?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, because where it's coming from, that's...
Okay, I'll do that and...
We can talk about...
Email Tom and see if the board...
There's a phone call coming up, is what you're saying.
And that's all this was, is a request to coordinate a phone call?
And it was the West Nile virus is what I had forgotten, but...
Oh, the West Nile.
As it pertains to sage grouse, yeah. So there are some concerns, I think, that they're seeing diminished numbers of sage grouse in our unit, in the brothers unit, for reasons that are hard to explain, because it's not as if there's a lot of large-scale development that has been approved out there, so in any event, the...
Bad winter.
Right, and there's been some wildfires in eastern Oregon, yeah. So I'll see what I can find out.
I have another update I wanted to bring up was, because we haven't really done updates, we didn't do them last week. I went to Deschutes Forest Collaborative on Tuesday, and a couple of things, this is the last year of the funding, and it's come up that we're really the people in the best position to try to lobby for more funding, and as we've learned at county AOC meetings, the collaborative isn't, the collaboratives don't work as well in some areas as ours does, and so there's not necessarily just universal support for spending a lot of, you know, raising a lot of money or allocating a lot of money. So that was kind of interesting, because nobody's ever asked us specifically to do it, which was kind of interesting, it's, because that would be something we would do, is we'd talk to our congressmen or senators and say, what can we do, and kind of lobby for it. And so I haven't followed, I had a chance to follow up with Ed, but I will, and there may be something we'll need to do on that, but it's the last year of that, and there, we have tens of thousands of acres of our forests that are prepared for various treatment, whether it's thinning, mowing, or fire, and, but it depends on the projects going forward and this funding and the program going forward, so it was pretty interesting. So I just thought I'd bring that up, and I'll get, I'll find out what more we can do, but I, we should be, keep that in mind, because...
So a question, and the collaborative, the idea is to get everybody at a table, competing interests, try to circumvent the threat or action of litigation on these projects.
Yeah.
Does the funding really, I mean, is there, what does the funding do? As in, it didn't really pay all the meetings, it paid to...
Well, it funds for, funding is somewhat for staff, and we do, there are people we pay...
For the collaborative itself?
Yeah, there's, like, CYC provides a staff person, and there's some other things that it goes to, maybe, I can't remember.
But I guess I'm trying to say, so, yeah, administrative of the collaborative, but is there funding for the projects in the forest service?
Yeah, I think there is, I think there's a connection to that somehow, and maybe I'm confusing the two funding streams, but there was a need for us to be involved in that as well. Maybe it was the funding at the Forest Service level as well to do the work, but they're just, it was interesting that nobody's ever said, hey, Phil, do you think you could talk to anybody about this? And it came up that that's been done in the past, and no one, and I've been on, going to the meetings for three years, and I didn't, I mean, I've been involved with people, like the smoke plan or changing the smoke rule or things like that that came up, but the actual issue of funding, no one's ever said, what can you do? And it's, like, that's what we could do as commissioners, and so...
So, yeah, a little learning, you know, effort for us, a work session item would be, okay, what does that funding?
Yep.
You know, is it a federal allocation from somewhere specifically, for what purpose? You know, just kind of laying a little of that out.
Well, the funding that's been proposed at the federal level is, very little of it is even available to our collaborative and others. A lot of it's for other prior promises, almost, so it's surprising to me how small it is, and...
And then, is there any of the efforts, like the governor's wildfire committee or whatever, and the dollars they were talking about in the legislature, is that the same domain? As in, you know, it's the same forest possibly that they were...
Well, I asked, you know, I asked about that, because that's been, to me, the big $4 billion question from the state level, is that they've come out wanting to do all this stuff, where's the money, you know, where's the money coming from? And how are they going to fund it all? It's great, ambitious projects, and, so that's a big, that was a big topic, and nobody really had the answer, and it was pretty interesting.
Maybe there's truly just two different worlds there, and they're not even coordinating.
Yeah, because, oh, yeah, ODF is, you know, a completely different, you know, entity than, and we don't use them as much over here as, you know, the valley does and the west side.
So, I mean, I'd love to advocate, need to learn some more.
Yeah, so I'll do that, I'll meet with Ed, and we'll kind of make a presentation, but it was just really interesting to see that.
Well, we will be getting ODF billing for our fire prevention, which didn't go through last year, but it will be going through this year because they've already sent out a notification letter.
Have they?
Yes, I believe there were like 1,400 different properties that were not built in the past that will be built for what they do. I did have a COAC, our, excuse me, COAC meeting last week was postponed, and we had a health council, Central Oregon Health Council, five-year planning retreat on Thursday, and that was spent on what we see the vision in five years. It was fairly well-attended, so, you know, we'll see how the documentation comes out from their team for that date.
And so a question on that is, the health council, will it continue to get, as long as we have the kind of system we have now, money from this coordinated care organization, a certain number of...
Right.
Millions of dollars each year that they, that that plan continues? Is that funding source?
Yes.
And how much is that, do you know roughly, or...
I don't have it off, the percentages, I believe, changed, and I do know that our internal auditor is working on it, so he's looking at that. One of the goals on the wall was to have, in five years, St. Charles empty but thriving, and I'm like going, I don't believe that's possible, because we live in a community of a lot of senior citizens here, and I was aware when, in the past, they've, you know, like said, oh, hospitals don't need to have as many beds, but like in today's situation, you actually, the more beds we have, the more prepared we are for pandemic, so.
So empties of the goal is to not have beds in the hospital?
That was someone's vision.
A vision.
A vision, and I'm like, I just couldn't really see that vision, because...
Isn't that what hospitals were for, was people to stay in?
Well, when they need to be. Now, maybe according to one of the experts in the room, 30% of the people in the hospital don't need to be there, but even if there's 30%, 70% do need to be there, so.
So it's a vision statement, I can see somebody saying that, yeah.
Well, but it just, it reminds me of a hospital I knew that only built 200 beds, you know, in the late 90s, and they immediately realized that they needed to add 250 more beds, because that did not handle the population, and, you know, our population is growing. The good news is St. Charles does have, the old ICU is now available, and we desperately need every bed in our, you know, in our community, so I'm happy that that is up and running.
So we all might get a call from a homeowner in southern Deschutes County, garage was close to the setback on the property, and so there's an email from Will on that, just letting you know that...
I was involved in that, too.
Good, I talked to her twice now, I drove by, she knows it is, you know, kind of close to my house, a couple miles away, so I drove by to see it, and so, and it's really just an application for a variance from her point of view, but, yeah.
I talked to her also, and she seems pretty happy with how it's proceeding at this point.
Yeah, I mean, she's going to be in a tight spot.
They need to sell.
Yeah, yeah, just letting you know, or...
Health reasons.
Is there any report on the audit committee? Didn't you meet Friday?
Oh, yes, we did. It was an excellent meeting, and we did discuss the fact that, not this year, but next year, we will have, you know, bids will go out for a new auditor coming in, and what were the feelings of the people on the committee, should we stay with the same firm out of Idaho? They're doing a great job, but it would be open, and it, you know, that's something, in not too many months, we'll be looking forward to that. The cash management that we looked at in the different departments, everything seemed to be pretty well coming through positively, and then we got to look at that new financial statement that James and his team and Whitney had prepared, that was, you know, the 10 pages, the popular financial statement, I believe that's what it's called. And the fact that I think it had been around since, it was available since maybe like 1997, but this is the first time ever that Deschutes County had done one, and it's, the good news is, it has 10 years of history on each page, and so people can really get a detailed but friendly look at our county finances.
Where are those available to people?
Where are they available? Probably in our libraries.
Online.
Whitney, where are they available?
They're available on our website, and we also have hard copies available in the office if the commission is interested in having a few with you, or if residents are interested in picking up a copy, but James did a great job on that, his team, it's a great publication.
Yes, yes. And your color selections, the photographs were outstanding, so thank you for what you did.
Did you have a report, Tom, on the budget? Didn't you go to the audit committee, too?
He was there.
Yeah, I was there also. We also, David unveiled a couple of reports that he had finished. One was on cell phone usage within the county, so there's some opportunity, I think, to kind of make ourselves more efficient there. It's been a while since we've reviewed sort of our use of cell phones, and, I mean, as you all know, that technology has developed rapidly the last few years, and some of the cost plan changes have changed. We have a mix of county-issued cell phones that we provide to staff and stipends for others, so it was good to have a look, that David had a look at it, and like I said, I think there's some opportunities to update our policies and our mix of equipment there, so that was the other big piece of the report on Friday.
Yes, 270 employees, wasn't it? That was the number that had that cell phone.
Yeah, I think it's maybe higher, because there's, yeah, I mean, there's over 200, both in health and sheriff's office alone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the number that I remembered. Okay, so, anything else?
Couple things. It was our understanding on Friday, when we were talking about the coronavirus, that there was a couple of specific issues related to it that we were to be prepared to speak about today, and I know we kind of moved on quickly, but one had to do with Fair and Expo, and the other had to do with employee leave, and there's been a, you know, some, if you've, I've been kind of watching my cell phone today, a few even developments this afternoon that have occurred with that, so I'm not sure if you're, if you have time to kind of cover off on those last few issues or not, or if you want to push that to Wednesday or another day.
I'm available.
Okay.
I should stand up at some point, spend a couple hours.
So I...
To be healthy?
I just...
Do you have an end time for the meetings after?
Do we have an end time? Does anyone have an end time? Yes. What's the time, how soon is the road going to be frozen? That's all I want to know.
There you go, that's, I'm available.
I don't, yeah, I don't really want to slide home, but anyway, yes.
Okay, so one, I think we can cover pretty quickly, the Fair and Expo, there was a discussion Friday, we were talking about events, and at that time, we had already gotten the directive that any event over 250 was prohibited in the state, and so Jeff and his staff worked with event organizers, and each of them sort of postponed, you know, under that directive, and, but there was a question, what about events smaller? And since then, a couple of things have happened. Number one, the, most of the other events, well, why don't you come on up, Jeff, you can speak to this, but have also postponed, so there's not really much business left for the, us to really make a decision on just shutting down the facility or not. There's some that can, may be able to work outdoors, very small stuff, but anyway.
Yeah, it's in the news now, 25 people, four weeks.
I actually...
What news did you find? I was just looking to see.
I just, an update at KTVZ is for...
Did you guys get the call from someone from Champion, a program for children, for schools, and like 20 students, and they're looking for like a classroom where they can work from? Did anybody get that call today?
Yeah, we received something in the office, I haven't been briefed on that this afternoon, but I do have an email that they reached out, but I don't have the details as of yet.
Right, yes, Nick, and I'm supposed to talk to him tomorrow afternoon, but I know I'm meeting with you in the morning, so we can...
Yeah, we can cover that in the morning, I'll get some more information when I get back to the office about what it is they're looking for.
Right, he said it was for people that have, they work in the emergency field, and so it's for their children, so that they don't have to worry if there's, you know, their kids are well taken care of.
So there's a question, we're offering, they want to use any fairgrounds to do it?
Right, that, we're looking for locations, and they, the fairgrounds was what popped up for in Deschutes County. They needed like, you know, like small classrooms or something, classes of 15 to 20, isolated classes.
Yeah, so I'm looking...
How are we doing? I mean, I guess that's my question generally about the fairgrounds, so we've got this huge facility, we can't have events, it'll be empty, I guess, for 30 days, it could be empty for 60 days, is it going to be used for anything else? Would there, you know...
So as of now, 21 of the 23 events that were planned to occur between March 12th and April 12th have either self-p postponed or canceled.
So how many postponed?
Well, to explain you, what you explained to the fair board about sometimes postpones the way that fits contractually, doesn't it? Isn't that what you were kind of saying?
Well, we utilize the word postpone initially to try to give the maximum amount of time for each event to make their own determination, as kind of was mentioned earlier. We want the events to make the choice that's appropriate for each individual event. We're primarily just the host of those events, and it's up to them to follow the responsibilities of the law at all times, and so it is our intention to try to facilitate, or was our intention to facilitate, what we could, with... our intention to facilitate what we could, while making each, or letting each individual event make the determination that was appropriate for them in regards to could they comply with the law and working with them at that time. We continue to see, obviously, the, the language and the guidance change, so that adjusts what we can do moving forward and kind of the, the position, but it also gave us a little bit more time to evaluate contracts and see where we were, where obviously the, the day of the announcement was the day we were opening our, what's probably our second largest event of the year, our largest non-fair event, so we were sort of trying to, to, to facilitate how that was going to work, or whether or not that event was going to be allowed to occur, and so we, we utilized that word postpone rather than utilizing something that had a little bit more legal definition. As far as kind of the, the initial question is what's postponed versus what's canceled, quite a few of the, of, well, the other thing we're trying not to use is the word cancel, because many of our events, we hope, will return in 2021, including the Central Oregon Sportsman Show, the High Desert Stampede, USABMX, the Oregon Bow Hunters Association, and some others. So we're, we're hoping that those are postponed initially, even if they are postponed until 2021, that they're not indefinitely canceled.
So what's, what's the numbers in?
Of...
What Commissioner Dyer asked.
Of what's postponed versus canceled.
It's like, I had an event that was going to be this weekend, and they've actually moved it to May sixteenth. So no, had, did anyone do that, that had, within this thirty days?
Uh, we have quite a few events that we're working on finding alternate dates for of those twenty-one, of the twenty-one events so far. I don't have the exact number of what has indicated it won't be replaced in the 2020 calendar year. I can get that number for you by tomorrow morning, though.
Okay.
I know we've talked, we've talked with each of the event partners that we have that are hosting each of those events, and it's our intention that where possible, that we would find alternate dates for as, any of those events that could logically happen in this year, this calendar year. But we also are looking at events through June that are now indicating that they won't be happening through this year. So, so we're not only focused on the, the initial thirty-day period, but also the, the following thirty days, and seeing events now and talking to events into the month of June that are electing to cancel or postpone on their own.
So you've got three months, basically. You've got March, April, or May and June, so three months of potential postponement slash cancellations. What, now you said there was two that hadn't in this first month, but did you know that the, I think, so now the number you can have in a gathering is twenty-five, so wouldn't those two be out also?
The one appears that it would. That was an equestrian event that was kind of holding out. It was less than two hundred and fifty and outside, and we were trying to determine if it would be able to maintain the social distance requirements. If it falls under that, they, their numbers were slightly, slightly more than two hundred, so that would fall under the new guidance. The other one is the State FFA Convention initially indicated that they were going to cancel and has now come back to ask if they could host their event virtually by producing essentially a live-streamed event utilizing the same setup that they would have used, just without the part, well, with the, the event participants, but without the, the crowd itself.
Debate last night.
Yeah, similar to the debate or, or some of the, some of the activities that did occur over the weekend.
Day, but nothing else.
Yeah.
So are we, so what are we doing in terms of, have we estimated lost revenues over three months, if it's all?
Yeah, Jeff has that, that outline. We, actually, we're gonna speak to you tomorrow. We've, he's got some plans to dive in and use this as an opportunity to do a whole lot of maintenance projects that were, we haven't been able to get to, so we've got a list of those, but we're, yeah, we'll talk about, we've got some information to share with you on finances generally.
Last day, we were gonna do that?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow morning, we have our individual meetings with you.
So do we have any other exposure or liability for any of these cancellations, or?
Do we have exposure?
Yeah, the contracts, I just wonder, I don't know what the contracts look like.
Yeah, the contracts typically read that their, their deposit would be refunded, and typically the full payment then comes to time of the event, I believe, in which case they wouldn't be making that payment, so. I mean, that's how we've been processing them to this point, based on the event contracts, the language in those.
Is returning the deposits, that we don't have any other exposure for any other reason?
No. Now, if we start letting the facility available, schools or whomever, that could open some doors as to issues, but in terms of our, how clean it might be and sanitized and things of that nature, so I think that would require a deeper discussion if we're gonna consider that. And I, you know, it's such a moving target. It's twenty-five right now. You know, I'm seeing online fees that the federal government's saying ten people now, so.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Basically shut down in San Francisco.
Yeah, they have.
They have?
Six counties around it have all been sheltered in place.
Oh gee, I wonder why. No, I mean, they've had a homeless population problem there for how long? That has just gone on and on, and it's...
Yeah.
So it definitely makes sense. I mean, it's really unfortunate. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
See you in the morning.
So another issue that we, we've been talking about is our employee leave policy. So Kathleen is, is working on a draft and has been in admin and legal and have been kind of working with her and offering some suggestions. So we thought what might be the best is for, once that's in a kind of a final, or at least a final draft form, that we put hard copies in your in-basket for you to have a look at, and you can certainly give us feedback, and we can follow up with you, you know, either individually or, or Wednesday potentially to...
So we'll get those tomorrow, then?
I have them, I mean, I have the draft that we worked out, so I'll call them.
Couldn't, since we're here, can we get a kind of a briefing of the big ideas or something in it? I mean, rather than, so we'll know what to look for. Big ideas, Kathleen, just the big ideas.
Thank you, Kathleen.
So I, I will say that this is, you know, work that is happening across, I would say, Oregon, probably everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
Where, yes, agencies are, organizations are looking to put into sort of temporary policies to respond to leave needs of their employees related to the coronavirus. And so what, this is pretty, I would say, basic. There are sort of categories of leave needs, and what we need to determine is how the county, how or if the county will provide specific paid leave or leave for these scenarios, and there's really sort of eight kind of big scenarios, and I will, they're, they're identified pretty clearly, so I'll let you read through those. And I also have some ideas on what other local organizations are doing in terms of how they're responding to leave needs, both paid leave, either providing paid leave, or how they're adjusting existing leave policies to allow more flexibility to employees to access either leave banks that typically haven't been, they've not been able to access, or to go into like a negative leave for a certain number of hours essentially borrow against their future leave banks. There are some others who are considering like a hardship or a leave donation bank as well. So there are some, some concepts or thoughts for us to consider. Let's see. And there's, there are options for, you know, built into this, this idea of allowing remote work when possible, but recognizing that that's not an answer for everybody or every situation, so.
So there'll be some people that are affected by the COVID-19, either themselves or their family. Then there's a lot, it seems like our economy's kind of shutting down, so it's kind of like a big recession in terms of the amount of work that's getting done. So wouldn't some people, do we need everybody working full-time in the county for the next month, or do certain departments need a lot of people and some need not as many, or is anybody, have we talked or thought about that? Because I can't, if, if everybody else, I mean, we're really, when you talk about all these gatherings and things, all sorts of things are going to shut down, and so what, can't believe that we wouldn't also be shrinking our needs some. I mean, it doesn't feel like we have as many, you know, if we end up canceling county commission meetings, well, then we wouldn't be working full-time. So wouldn't people, I don't know. So have you talked about that besides, I mean?
So I, I mean, are you suggesting like furloughs or reduction in force of?
Well, I just wonder if you're talking about it. I mean, the, the economy, there, there's not going to be anybody doing anything. If you look, you know, think about what people are going to be doing. I mean, they're not, other than shopping, and once they get all their stuff, you know, that they can get off the shelves, what are people going to be doing? They're...
So we've, we've talked about, and Eric and I are making the rounds with our departments to talk about each department's specific situation.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, is just, different ones would be different.
Yeah, and, and, you know, again, things are changing so rapidly that it's, it's, it's somewhat challenging, but for example, just this morning, I went over with Jeff, you know, both the midterm, long-term needs, you know, what's the plan? Who's essential? What do we have to do? Who's not essential? You know, what can we put off? So we went through each of his staff by category, maintenance, office, and so forth, the different functions, and we have, we have plans, or he has plans, for, for how those folks could be employed, how they could be productive, while in his case, he's got events that are not happening. So then we have other departments, say Road, the Road Department, where you've got essential functions. You gotta have, you know, our equipment operators out there on the road this weekend, clear snow, but, you know, do the maintenance stuff that they normally do. They have, they do have some office staff, some, say, GIS folks, some of the engineering support, some others that, you know, you, I hate to use this term, but, but maybe are non-essential in terms of the day-to-day operation. So those folks, you know, have work that they can do. It's not like they're, they're, they're not all dependent on, say, a customer coming in to generate work. There are, there are other kinds of work. There may be some employees in some departments who are dependent, say, on an external request for service coming in, you know, say the, you know, people at the counter upstairs, you know, whether they're in finance or assessor or even in the clerk, that, you know, where they, if there's no customers, then there, there is not an essential, you know, or work that they could do based on that. However, you know, I know in Nancy's case, and we've talked about this, there are other, there is other work that she can provide. The flip side of that is if, you know, now with school being shut down, a lot of people have daycare where they're concerned about, and they, they can't be here for whatever reason, and there may be more of that once the incidence of illness starts to, you know, increase, which we expect it will, and that's where Kathleen's policy comes in, in terms of, you know, how do we provide for people to be gone from here and still be able to maintain coverage? And that's where some policy choice comes in, in terms of your willingness to either provide leave or, or, or in the other extreme, you know, require the employee to be accountable for their leave, either in terms of borrowing against or taking unpaid leave, some of those things. So...
So it sounds like you are going through department by department, looking at who's essential.
Yes.
Because, you know, I, I'm serious about the economic impact. I mean, there's going to be lots of people, I believe, you know, right now, certain employers are not, are thinking they can carry employees, but if this continues as the way Dr. Conway suggested it could, then we could be looking at a real, you know, economic impact where lots of people are laid up. Also, all of the property tax owners that, and people that own property, if they have anything, any retirement plans or things in the market, they've lost a third of their value in a month, and so they're impacted. So are we going to just keep full staff doing everything, or is there going to be a, any kind of reduction, or where would the reductions be? And I think that's something, as an entity, we need to think about, not, maybe not today, but we ought to be really looking at those things and not creating work for people, because, but really saying, you know, where are we on this? So that's, the, the health part of it, if you have an actual health need, is, is a simpler thing to me than what this big picture thing's going to be. So I just wonder, I don't expect a day, but I think sometime in the next week, we really should be going through departments. I mean, there's less people on the roads. Does everybody in the sheriff's office keep working full-time? I mean, if there's not as many people, if nothing's happening, a lot of things the government does aren't as busy, is all I'm saying. So it's just all I'm asking. So we haven't had that discussion, but it looks like that's, we're heading that direction.
Well, so, yeah, I mean, let's remember, we're a three-person governing body with professional staff here. We've kind of been in this spot before, and this is going to be an interesting time where things happen rapidly.
I remember that we're a three-person commission. I'm bringing up an issue.
Well, and I'm, let's make sure we're all making choices together and communicating amongst each other.
Well, I'm bringing up the issue. So what you, now's the time to say what you think, or, and that's what I, I guess I'm just bringing it up, because I've thought about these impacts.
Well, I was actually really happy to hear that even though Mount Bachelor closed for the week, they were still going to pay their staff for the one week. So at least, because that happened like, you know, with no warning for those people. So at least they got paid for, they're getting paid for one week.
I think a lot of employers are going to do that.
Right, they're going to try, you know, and that's why I'm glad that the restaurants don't have to just close, because there's so many people, and those people live a lot of times paycheck to paycheck, and, you know, it's going to really, it could be very impactful.
I would say what we're seeing in a lot of these policies are that they're temporary with maybe a thirty-day approval period, and that they're evaluated weekly because of the changing nature of this. I think that it's one thing to bring a policy into place when we expect something to maybe be a few weeks or even thirty days. It's a different discussion, should we be looking at a policy for a few months of a situation like this? And so, you know, in the policy, it does have that, there's a review period in there, that this will be reviewed regularly to be adjusted based on kind of the, the ever-changing nature of this.
But, yeah. Well, so I'll give you an example in the building world, because I was associated with it for quite a while, and every time there was a recession of any kind, there was two thousand, in ninety-nine and two thousand, when the tech bubble burst, or of course, the big one in oh-eight, oh-nine, but even before that, in the nineties, there would be a reduction in the people building houses. There'd be a reduction in the number of, well, you know this, number of people getting permits. So if this, if the, things like the market don't correct very fast, there's going to be a lull and things like that. So that would be a department, you know, we've been staffing up for, for three years, adding people and trying to make sure we're prepared for everything, and I'm just saying, we, we need to think about that, in my view, so.
The numbers for the room tax actually went up one-tenth of one percent. They didn't go down yet for, through February. So that was just the report we got this morning. It, it still did, it had a teeny...
Let's see how March looks.
Yeah, I know. No, but I mean, it was, I was, it was a teeny, teeny little uptick, so.
Well, and yeah, this, this, you know, pandemic is going to transition our economy. We just talked about, you know, video conferencing and, and the technology associated with that. We've had some things that have been on our desktops and on our phones that we haven't been using as a society, so I do believe, I mean, we're going to be in a transition right now. So, yeah, looking at our departments and how we do work, yeah, let's, let's schedule that into this big picture for sure.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen.
Commissioners, there were actually one other, the warming shelter. Eric, you want to speak about that real quick?
Oh, right.
As the board knows, the Neighbor Impact has been operating a warming shelter at the sheriff's office, at the work center. The warming shelter was going to close today because that's when the funds went through. The current license agreement to use the facility actually runs through the end of this month. Scott Cooper from Neighbor Impact called us on...
Scott Cooper from Neighbor Impact called us on Friday and asked if if the county would be willing to extend the license agreement and the operations of the warming shelter through the end of April with the possibility of additional 31 days.
April?
March.
This is March?
Yes, yes, through the end of April.
Okay.
And the reason for the request is the state has identified additional funds to continue operating the warming shelter. The funds will come through Oregon Housing and Community Services. In addition, with the current cold weather and the COVID-19, there's a desire to continue operating the, continue the warming shelter for end of April or even possibly a little bit longer. I checked with the sheriff to ask him his position on that, since it is at the sheriff's office work center, and the sheriff is opening, is open to extending the license agreement. So we plan to put that on the, for board consideration next week. We'd like to do a consent agenda, but it's, it's really up to the board.
Are there rules about when it's open? As in, it's a warming shelter? Could the transition from a warming shelter at night during cold conditions to a housing facility long-term?
I think the plan would.
Probably what we're looking at.
I think the plan would be to continue its current operations, the current hours. The other thing is why Scott called on Friday was they had planned on letting go of the staff, because the shelter, the warming center was going to close today. So they planned on letting go of their staff on Friday and today. So with the additional money from the state, you know, they can keep the staff on. So, but I, but I anticipate, or the request is to continue the the same operations for an additional time period.
Well, because it won't be cold nights here pretty soon. So, yeah, let's just keep an eye on it. What's, the request is for the end of April?
The request is, is to, yeah, extend the license agreement through the end of April with a possibility of an additional 31 days after that. And the board, I think I was just, just in case, I mean, the, if the board only wants to do, do it through the end of April, that's an option, and then if there's.
We could do just 30 days from now, which is like the middle of April, like, it's the middle of March. I mean, the, I think there is impacts, in my opinion, I don't know the effect or the relationship to the COVID-19 and whether it's better to have everybody stay in the place or not. I mean, really, it's close contact, it would violate our meeting rule now. But, but the idea was warming, and so if it, you know, just before this all happened, it was feeling like we were getting to warming, so maybe 30 days from now, we'll see, but.
I mean, Scott indicated that part of the request was because of the COVID-19 and the vulnerability of people who are are experiencing homelessness.
Yeah, well, I get that, but I'm not sure that I'm more vulnerable when they're all, when you have 48 in a space about as big as this room. I don't know, I mean, that'd be a health decision. I don't, I guess somebody should tell us about that.
So are they having 48 people a night, then?
I don't know the numbers.
Maybe, maybe you can let us know the numbers.
Sure.
I know that, I thought it was good that they dropped off, you know, under such as temperature and that people actually started counting on it, and yet I've heard from people that live in that community that the negative impacts of having it in their community, and they've been patiently waiting for, you know, the program to move. So that's the other side.
Well, that was kind of our commitment, too.
Right. I know, trying to make sure that people are respectful of that, of the neighborhood.
Well, I'd like to, yeah, schedule time to look at it again. 30 days does sound kind of like the right time. Things may be changing fast in that period, but we can't transition, and I would feel awkward, you know, for that community that we were impacted during the winter. If a transition from a overnight cold shelter to we don't have anywhere else for people to go, I mean, that's a conversation that we don't want to imply. And as I say, 30 days from now, we'll see what it really looks like, too.
Right.
So I could invite Scott Cooper in next week and not put it on consent for a discussion with the board, and we can have these, answers to these questions.
I think that'd be excellent.
Invite Peter, the sheriff, for Catherine Schultz.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Last procedural question. On your Wednesday agenda, we've got GFOA award for the county's budget document, which we won again, which is great. In the past, we've combined the presentation of those awards to the commissioners for efficiency's sake with the award that we typically win for the comprehensive annual financial report as well, and done those at the same time with sort of an outside entity. Greg was hoping to maybe split them up, do them one at a time this year, just to kind of shine a little more spotlight on the good work of his different staff people who prepare those two documents. So I just wanted to check in with the board, make sure you're okay with that. If you'd rather do them together for just efficiency's sake, we can, we can pull the item on Wednesday and wait until we hear on the CAFR GFOA award, which should likely be in a couple of months.
I think it would be really nice to split it, and, because different people have worked on it, and they're always striving to do a better job for the citizens of Deshute County. So, I, you know, those people don't get thanked enough, so I think it would be great.
Is that a head nod in agreement?
I support that, absolutely.
And also, there was, and I'm not sure if you, if you're ready to wrap up, looks like you might be, but there was a couple of property items from last week that we did an executive session that we held off on. One was the Children's Foundation, you heard the presentation today, so we can bring that, we can talk about that today, or we could bring that back on Wednesday in the executive session. And the other one was the request from the city event for the Overton Place right-of-way, and we were going to wait after the Vets' Village meeting, which we also have. So again, your choice for today or Wednesday.
Those would be executive sessions.
Right. So we'd have to go upstairs.
Yeah, unless, and we could have an executive session in this room, we just turn off the recording and do it the same way. I think that.
Well, I'm still available time-wise, is, you know, just.
I'd prefer to, I'd want to look through the, I'm not prepared to do the Becky Johnson Center today, because I can't remember all the issues, I don't have the paperwork with me. The Overton Place was simpler, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was just.
Just giving property to the city or something?
Right.
It's basically street. It's not usable for anything but.
It's the right-of-way street? Yes.
Yeah, that was Overton. But I think the, the thinking was that maybe there's, ought to be a quit-proc, call the city for something on.
Yes. Well, I haven't heard back regarding the stabilization funding. I did leave a message with several people, you know. So let's wait, and I can make some phone calls over that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
So what we'll do then, and Deb is here, we can, we'll kind of either resubmit or update you on some of the material that we've given in advance. We'll get that to you before Wednesday, so you have everything together, and so you'll have a better idea. And I, maybe I haven't been as good as, as I should have in making sure that you have updated and new copies of information before, potentially executive sessions, just so you know or have an idea, and at least we'd like to talk about it, and we'll tighten that up and do a better job of it.
Great. Okay. Then, may we adjourn? We are going to adjourn now. Thank you very much.